Good evening. Welcome to the Winter Town Council meeting for June 4th, 2024 at 7:00 in the Harvey Hearing Room. To call the meeting to order, roll call, please. Denise.
Counsel Tassinieri.
Here.
Counsel Munson.
Here.
Counsel Costigan.
Yes.
Counsel Aiello. Counsel Swob.
President.
Counsel DeRoz.
Here.
Vice President Belcher.
Yes.
President LaTerry. Yes. I ask everybody to please rise for the pledge led by Counsel Tassinieri.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is a public hearing. It's going to entail a joint meeting with the Winter Town Council and the Winter Planning Board. So I will ask that the town clerk call the roll for the joint meeting to be open.
Chris Boyce.
Here.
Gina Demento. Sarah Fornes. Alyssa Gamble.
Here.
Honna Mercerit.
Here.
Kim Hirsch.
Here.
Jason Palutro.
Here.
Thank you.
And just read the town council again, just so.
Counsel Tassinieri.
Here.
Counsel Munson.
Here.
Counsel Costigan.
Yes.
Counselor DiMarco.
Here.
Counsel Aiello. Counsel Swob.
President.
Counsel DeRoz.
Here.
Vice President Belcher.
Yes.
President LaTerry.
Yeah. All right, we have a quorum, and the public hearing is going to be open. This is to discuss flood maps, changes, alterations that are made. I'm going to ask town manager and town council, Jim Cipolletta, to address us and give us an overview, please.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I'm going to end planning board members, thank you for coming. We, under a little bit of a shorter timeframe than normal, we were notified about a little less than a month ago by the state that we needed to update our floodplain regulations. We hadn't received anything up until then about it. We didn't know about it, so now we've updated it, and now there were some model things we had to change. Most of the 2016 maps are staying the same. They're available digitally. They don't give us paper copies anymore, as we learned trying to get paper copies. And then there's one flood map that I sent out to both the planning board and the council that was changing as of July 3rd, 2024. And it's mostly Chelsea, but there's a small little corner that includes Winthrop, which is why we need to adopt it, in the lower right-hand corner of that map, which is mostly the, I believe, the runways at Logan. So we did most of these changes, the language changes, so at this point I'll pass it over to Attorney Cipolletta. We've worked with the state and FEMA. We've updated the floodplain regulations, adopted the necessary language that we need to do. And I want to be clear, this is required because this is what drives, you know, people able to get flood insurance in town. It lists, you know, which zone you're in, whether it's an AO, an AE, a velocity zone, all of those things, and they're referenced on the map, and then this language is in there as well. But with that, I'll let Attorney Cipolletta set up his, so he's closer to the mic and people can hear him.
Well, and while Jim's getting ready, just to clarify again, I mean, some people have seen the map and they say, wow, Winthrop's not even on this map. Why are we doing this? And just for clarification, this isn't technically the mainland of Winthrop. This is basically the airport, but it affects Winthrop if we do not adopt it. Correct?
Thank you, Attorney. Along with the changes in the language, right?
Thank you. Mr. President and members of the council, Mr. Chairman, and members of the planning board, I just want to hit the wave tops on this because I think there's a lot of detail in the ordinance. The ordinance is something that is mandatory, and it was, it's dictated by the Federal Flood Insurance Management Agency and also through the State Flood Prevention and Management Agency, who we've been dealing with on an ongoing basis to come up with an ordinance that satisfies both the FEMA, the flood insurance people, and the state. And the state's been very cooperative with us. So the ordinance, as Tony has said, is mandated. And back in 2016, the town council adopted the firm maps, the Suffolk County firm maps, as they were established in 2016. Those maps have not changed, and those are still in effect. There was one particular map that is new, and it's the one that everybody's been talking about, that just has a little bit of Winthrop in it. And because this is, these are Suffolk County maps that we adopted, we get what's on that screen, part of Chelsea and Riviera and some other parts of Suffolk County.
I can just point out that lower, what I talked about earlier, that lower right-hand corner is the only piece of Winthrop on that map, yeah.
So all of the existing 2016 maps, and in the suffix J, six, seven numbers, then a J. The new map, which is dated July 3rd, 2024, and will go into effect at the same time as our ordinance is supposed to go into effect, bears the suffix designation of K. So there is only one new map, and that's the one you see up there. By adopting the ordinance that is required by the state, you will also be adopting this map as part of the firm Suffolk County flood maps. In addition to that, it is also required that we take all of those areas that are designated in the certain maps that are in effect now, and this K map does not affect us generally, and look to see what areas in those maps are designated as special flood hazard zones. When we aggregate those zones, we then are required to make those properties within those zones part of the special floodplain overlay district. So it's not a district that necessarily is contiguous. It doesn't have any specific continuity to it. It just covers those areas that are currently designated as special flood hazard areas. Those are not changing, and those 2016 designations, as far as the information that we have, are not changing. The zones, as we know, that are designated on those maps, AE, AO, AH, and VE, VE being the velocity zones. So the overlay district will include all of those areas in the AE, AH, AO, and VE, nothing else. And it's only the zones that are currently designated. Couple of different things that have practical application, other than adopting the ordinance, is what is the real-world effect on Winthrop property owners? One thing that we know is that if we don't adopt this and put it into effect by 3 July 2024, then we are no longer, or any other city or town is no longer eligible to participate in the flood insurance program. Thus, as an extension of that, all of the flood insurance policies in any city or town that has not by 3 July adopted this ordinance will be suspended. What happens then? Well, if you, if a resident owns property and it's in a flood zone and they're required, and they have a mortgage and they're required to have a flood insurance by the bank, that flood insurance policy is not in effect. That has sort of a ripple effect that goes nowhere but bad, and I don't think it takes a lot of explanation for that. But once we get over that hurdle, and let's say on July 3rd, this becomes part of our ordinances, 17.50 will replace 17.40. The 40 is the current. 50 takes into effect, and 40 is subsumed into this, and 17.50 has all of the state required and federal required statutory language. Applicants for building permits in an overlay zone need to identify future flood risks. That means if somebody makes an application to the building department to build a new structure or to substantially enlarge or improve an existing structure, they must identify the flood risk, including a 2.4-foot sea level rise, as shown on the MC-FRM map, which is part of the map set, and the narrative of how the owner plans to minimize future flood impacts on their property and also surrounding properties. So it's asking for a lot of the things that the Conservation Commission would ask for, and a lot of the things that are set out in the ordinance are things that we see in orders of condition issued by the Conservation Commission. But what this ordinance does is it takes all of those things and makes it, puts them together in one ordinance that is applicable statewide. So there is no guesswork, there's no interpretation. The ordinance is the ordinance. It sets out specifically what you can do, what you can't do, where the responsibilities of the town employees and the department heads lie, and so forth. In the VE zone, no residential accessory buildings may be built, or repairs that are made cannot extend more than, the building more than 10% of the AE zone. So if you have of the VE zone, rather, if you have a lot in the VE zone, what this ordinance says, can't build a new residence. If you're going to improve the residence or you're going to extend it, you can't extend it to take up more than 10%, to extend more than 10%. In the AE zone, which is a little more of a common designation, new construction shall comply with the underlying zoning, which you know, Building Inspector, Board of Appeals and Planning Board have a handle on that. But structures in the AE zone cannot exceed 10% of that zone. So if you're in an AE zone, 100% of it, a part of it, then you cannot extend more than 10% of the definition or the outline of the AE zone. Likewise, same thing, expansion of the structure may not cause the increase, lot coverage of all structures within the AE zone to exceed 10%. In an AO and AH zone, only the applicant needs to demonstrate adequate drainage paths be provided to guide floodwaters away from the proposed structures. It also provides heightened review of proposed subdivisions in the floodplain district, and that comes within the purview of the planning board. And the planning board then has a heightened review of proposed subdivisions to assure that, one, proposals minimize flood damage, two, public utilities are located and constructed so as to minimize flood damage, and three, assure that adequate drainage is provided. Can you still get a variance within the floodplain overlay district? Yes, you can. From the Board of Appeals' perspective, if a variance is going to be granted, they may, they are required to make findings that they are required currently to make under Chapter 40A, but they also, in this floodplain overlay district, need to find that there is a goodness of fishing cause and exceptional non-financial hardship, that it will, the variance will not result in any additional threats to public safety or public expense, and that the variance is the minimum action necessary for relief. Those are all things that are taken into consideration as we work with properties that are in the floodplain, no matter what zone they're in, because they get looked at by CONCOM. Sometimes they get looked at by the planning board, and a lot of times they get looked at at the Board of Appeals. But what generally comes out is like four or five pages of conditions and an order of condition, and it tells the owner or the builder basically what this ordinance directs the owner and the town to abide by. So that's sort of the real-world application and how does it affect somebody who owns property? But number one, you know, you need to, when the ordinance is passed, that solidifies our flood insurance participation, and it also gives the town inspectors and boards and commissions a heightened level of review of projects and subdivisions, so that there is a little more attention paid to mitigating flood damage and the possibility of future flood damage by that 2.5-foot rise over time in the floodplain. So that's basically it. I think the ordinance has been amended three or four times as we have gone back and forth with drafts with the state. The one that is, I think, before the council and before the planning board would have been May 28th, 2024. That's the final that's been approved by the state for consideration by the planning board and the council. Thank you.
All right, so what we'll do is we'll open it up for questions for the planning board members and the council, and then we'll open it up for public. This is a public hearing. Counsel Swob.
Just naive question, but if I'm looking at that map, I don't know what AE, AO, where are they?
They're superimposed if, I can't see it from here, but.
It's on there. You just got to. There's also a legend. Yeah, there's a legend on the bottom.
Yes.
Generally speaking, are we talking about homes that are along the beach, or where we, what are we talking about?
We're talking about homes that are in the floodplain, in those designated areas. They're there now already.
Yes.
We're not adding anything.
Right.
So depending on where the property is located, obviously, if it's like right at the ocean's edge, you may be in a VE zone, you may be in a velocity zone. If you're a little bit inland, you might be in a different zone, but it all comes within the purview of this ordinance and also the.
Do you have any idea about how many homes are affected in these flood zones?
I do not.
As many as are affected today, because it's the same maps.
How many?
I don't know. I mean, how many people, homes in the flood zone, I don't believe we have an accurate count on that, but.
Maybe Jack has it later.
Well, maybe, yeah. I don't have it off the top of my head. But, you know, there's also, when you go on the FEMA maps, you can pull up the 2016 maps, and you can also, there's also a listing under there of all what's called LOMRs and LOMR, letter of map revision and letter of map agreement. So they show, like, this was already done in 2016. This was done statewide when I was working in other town. People would come in, they'd have to hire engineers, certify their first floor elevation of their house, and get a map revision done. So this was all, nothing's changing for those people, and all of those map revisions and map amendments are still listed there.
And you would know that when you bought your homes?
Absolutely.
Yes. By the way, the clerk just pointed out that there are 2,902.
Homes that are affected?
Okay.
Homes in the flood zone, in any combination of the flood zones.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the planning board or the council? Sure.
So I wanted to make sure that the numbers don't conflict, because it's numbered, the same numbering that the CBD district section is numbered at. So 17.50 is the CBD district, so it needs to be, I think .50 blank. So that was one comment. Do we have a copy of this flood risk model, 2.4-foot sea level rise map somewhere?
It's on their website. I don't have it. They don't, like I said, everything's digitized now, so we can find that on the.
So when I Googled it, I got a 2-foot, and I got a 4-foot, 3-foot, and a 6-foot, but I didn't find one that was specifically 2.4 feet.
Okay.
And it says that, you know, we're supposed to have that on file, so I just want to make sure we get that on file.
Yeah. And again, I call, yeah, we don't have a paper copy. We could print one, I'm sure. If we can find the map, we could print one, but we don't, they don't provide any more at the state level.
And then you need that in order to make the overlay district map, and does that need to be done before July 3rd, or is that something that, because we have all the information, it can be followed up after?
It could be followed up after, because everything in that regulation was signed off by the state.
Okay. Then I had, if you go to 17.50.070 use regulations, the last portion says, except these standards shall not apply to mixed uses. And my question about that is if somebody just puts in a 50-square-foot commercial use, can they exempt themselves, and do we want to rewrite that in some way that it doesn't become a way to get out of?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the citation.
17.50.070 use regulations. So it talks about it's applying to all sorts of different kinds of residential, single-family, multifamily apartments, but then it says, except these standards shall not apply to mixed uses.
Right.
And I'm, is it the non-residential uses of a mixed use? Is it a certain percentage? Do you know what I'm saying?
That's the language that was fed to us.
Okay. Is there any way to go back to the state to clarify that in time, or is something that we can?
I don't think it is, but I think we can amend it.
Okay.
I think we have to adopt it, and then we can.
Okay. It's just one of those things if somebody says, well, I don't want to do all that. I'm going to put a 50-square-foot convenience, or whatever, I'm going to put an office on this corner and not have to deal with it. And then, this is really a question, because I just don't even know what it means. For, in that same section, the following shall apply in the AE zone. I did not understand how a person is supposed to calculate this. Says new residential end or accessory construction shall conform to underlying zoning requirements, except that increased lot coverage within the AE zone shall not exceed 10% of the AE zone. Is a person supposed to calculate the area of the entire AE zone that their house is in, and then all of the coverage of the structures in those zones, and with their structure not exceed 10%?
That's, my interpretation of that is that shall not exceed 10% of the AE zone on their property.
On their own.
Again, force-fed to us, yes.
Well, that would be okay.
Right.
But is there a way to clarify that that's what it means and make that clearer, that a person isn't supposed to try and calculate, like, all of that area beyond their site?
No, I think that would be onerous, and you wouldn't be able to build anything.
All right, I think that was.
Quite well taken, though.
I think that was the.
The one thing on the section numbering and so forth, I think the protocol generally is that this ordinance is replacing the current ordinance, so I think as part of adopting it, you would delete 17.40, and in its place, make this 17.40, and just keep the numbers.
Okay, so there is already a section with this name. I didn't, when I was scanning through it today, I didn't find a section that said 17, I think it was about floodplain use. I thought this was an older section.
No, the 17.40 is the current flood hazard control regulations.
Because this says 17.50, which is the CBD district.
Right. So what we would do is we would just, anywhere that 40 appears, I mean, 50 appears, would make it 40, because we're deleting the current section and replacing it with the new section.
Why not just make this 40 and replace that the other 40?
That's what I mean.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to take 50 out of what the state and I came up with, and we're going to make this the new 40.
I just want to make sure that the CBD doesn't get deleted from the code, is where I'm going with that.
No, that would be tragic. Thank you for pointing that out, though, because nobody caught that.
Yep.
She did.
Counsel Swob.
One more quick question. If 3A were to pass, does this mean that 2,902 homes could not be increased in size or made into more, larger units than they were currently?
I guess that there are several versions to that. They're talking about increasing the footprint here, so yes, it would apply. It would apply to that, and it may have an effect, but there is a variance provision, and.
But that would be by the town?
By the town, yeah. We can't vary, there's a provision that was given to us by the state that's mandatory to be included in our ordinance, is that we cannot vary the building code. That has to be done by the state. But we can vary, we can grant variances to the underlying, you know, variance code, but also make findings that in doing so, within the overlay district, certain things are protected, and they're enumerated, and there are only three of them. So in some cases, it could. It could, but it only goes to footprint, to horizontal. Going vertical, you're not covering the ground, you know? So that would be, that would be an interesting one for the first one to come down the pike.
Yeah.
Any other questions on the council, or the, and we could come back if we do. Open it up to the public. Any questions from the public? Yes, sir.
Park 7, Precinct 2. This is for Mr. Cipolletta. You spoke of insurance. Is that just the national flood protection insurance that's offered by the US government, or is that all US government policies and private policies?
This does not apply to private policies.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Kim Dimes, Precinct 2, and Chairperson of the Conservation Commission. Suzanne, just to help you a little bit with your, which zone to look at, if you go to the FEMA maps, fema.gov website, you can pull up a format map specifically, and you would have to put your specific address in, because some, when you zoom in, you know, at a different, you know, capacity, you're going to see that some homes are actually have two different, they might be half VE, half AE. And so until you get the specific format, format map for that property, you can't see it. You would never be able to see it. You could never glance at that. You have to go to the specific address. And you put a pin, you drop a pin, and then it gives you the divide, it gives you the limits of the flood. So that'd probably help you with the question that you were, you know, so it's hard to really say how many homes are specifically in this, in a VE, or specifically in an AE, because some of them are chopped up and divided up. So, you know, some of them have X amount of square footers that might run into velocity. For instance, the Pontcharlais Church, that's in an AE, in a VE. One square is in a high velocity, the rest is in an AE. So two specific ordinance is, you know, applied to that piece of property, for instance, just to give you an example. So, and then I just wanted to say, the planning board, the question that you had about the 2.4 feet, I'm unfamiliar with that as well. I do know that in the velocity zone, that you have to bring, if you're doing 50% or more substantial value of the property increased by renovation, you have to bring it up three feet in elevation to what the elevation is, the elevation, flood elevation for that property. So say you're in a VE zone with elevation 15 flood, you have to bring that first floor, that threshold, the first floor has to be in an elevation 18. That's required. That's it, I think, in the residential Massachusetts residential building code, the Water Land Protection Act, and in FEMA regulations as well. So I'm not familiar with 2, maybe that's 2 dash 4 feet? I'm not sure, because that kind of confused me as well. And then I just wondered if the town might consider a height variance for people that have to do, that are doing substantial improvements, that have to bring their house out of, that are willing to bring their house out of the flood zone? If we can make, you know, a variance where they can, the height, the height, because they're going to lose three feet depending on where they are. And it's already come into play, and it's something to think about. Other municipalities are doing it, you know, by case-by-case situation, it's something to think about. Thank you. You're welcome. And it might be more enticing for people to bring their homes out of flood zone if they can make up for that on the other end. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
It's 2.5 feet.
Any questions on Zoom, Denise?
I have one.
Oh, sure.
Actually, it goes back to what you were saying about a certain percentage of the total cost of your, actually, I believe it's the structure, the structure alone on the property.
Structure alone, not the land.
Not the land and everything.
Yep.
And if you go over a certain amount, then, say, your first floor is below the floodplain elevation, now you have to bring everything.
You have to bring everything out.
Up the code, including adding floodgates.
In the E zone.
Right.
Yes.
Yes. Not the other zone.
So you see how it might be something enticing for people to, you know, instead of going below that threshold, 50% renovation, maybe if, you know, if they can gain it on the other end, there'd be more activity with that, because it would be in the best interest of everybody, themselves and the others.
Yes, sir. Just state your name and.
Brian Martinovich, Precinct 3. A quick clarifying question. What percentage basis was that?
So it's 50%?
50% of the value of the physical structure.
Yeah, and that is, that's actually calculated by the, by the building department and the building instructor. I think that would, he would be the person in our municipality that would do that, but it is by the appraised value, and it's 50% or more, you have to, you have to take it out of the flood zone.
So if you're in the flood zone and you go to make.
If you're in a VE, it's supposed to be a high-velocity VE zone.
And you decide to make, let's just say theoretically, your place is worth $300,000, you put $150,000 in, you can't get building permits for it unless you raise the building.
That's correct. And this is state law, yeah. Water and Protection Act, actually, it's not even the state. It's even federal with the FEMA regulations, FEMA regulations, the Massachusetts Building Code, and the Water and Protection Act, Massachusetts.
Thank you both.
I have so many other questions, but I'll leave it.
If you have a couple of questions, now's the time.
So is it all at one time? Is it incremental?
No.
Like if someone say like, oh, you've done 50,000 now, you've done 50,000, you've done 150.
You could get away, you could actually chip away at it and get away with not taking it out of the flood zone, but I don't know why you would want.
That seems arbitrary.
I don't know why you would wanna put in the half, half value, the appraised value without taking it out of the flood zone, to be honest with you.
Many people take lots of risks in this world.
But the other thing, you know, the other thing to look at, though, honestly, is if you go on FEMA's website, and you look at the savings to take yourself, take yourself out of the flood zone, it pays for itself over a 30-year mortgage. If you see, you could do, they have a calculator on there that you can use. You'll be amazed at the savings that they save you. Something to consider.
Construction costs would be probably approximately the same as the renovations you would do, so I'd have our time believing that.
But just something to consider.
Any other questions? Counselor Tassini.
Just as a question of clarification, Attorney Cipolla, this is a zoning ordinance that's mandated by the state and by the state and the federal government?
Yes.
So it's state and federal mandated zoning?
This, yeah, well, the feds get involved by holding the flood insurance participation over the, over the states.
So it's a state mandated zoning ordinance?
It's state mandated, yes. And it's, and the state tells us that any municipality in Massachusetts who does not adopt an appropriate ordinance to fulfill the goals that were set by the flood insurance program would not be eligible to participate in federal flood insurance. So the enforcement arm here actually is the state, but the punitive arm actually is the feds.
So we've been adopting regularly, regular updates to this flood zone planning?
Since at least, at least 2009 on our, yeah, and then 2016 was the last. So we're not doing away with the 2016 update. We are adding to it only by this small K designation map.
So we've already done state mandated zoning at least two times, we're about to do it a third time?
Yes, we have to adopt their, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a question? You had a question? No. Any other questions? So how this process will work out, the planning board will be meeting on June 17th to discuss this matter. They will make a recommendation to the council. The council will vote on this at our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is June 18th. I want to thank the planning board for taking time out of their busy days to come here tonight. It's greatly appreciated, and thank you for all the work you do. Motion, is there a motion to?
To adjourn the meeting?
To adjourn the joint meeting? A motion by Counselor DiMarco, second by Vice President Belcher. Any discussion on the motion, seeing none, please roll call, please.
Counselor Tassini.
Yes.
Counselor Costigan.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor DiMarco.
Yes.
Counselor Aiello. Counselor Swope.
Yes.
Counselor DeRoz.
Yes.
Vice President Belcher.
Yes.
Vice President Letery.
Yes, but that's okay, and I've been demoted again. I've been demoted before, and the planning board also, please.
Chris Boyes.
Yes.
Gina Demento. Sarah Fornas. Alyssa Gamble.
Yes.
Anna Mercerit.
Yes.
Kim Hirsch.
Yes.
Jason Pelutro. Thank you.
Meeting adjourned. Again, thank you guys very much. Thank you.
Adam.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris?
Good to do a good job.
Alyssa, I'm sorry, do you have any meetings you're supposed to have? Turn on them?
Are they on?
Everyone.
But you have one coming up, right? I plan on being there for that. Thank you. All right, we are back in session. We are back in session. Minutes from the May 21st, 2024 meeting have been circulated.
Motion to approve.
There are a motion to approve, motion by Counselor DiMarco, second by Counselor Swope. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, are those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Thank you. General information and recommendations. Now, we have another presentation by the Finance Commission and the Finance Chair, Matt Gorkowitz. This is on the fiscal '25 budget. The Finance Commission, which is comprised of the Citizens Finance Committee, as well as this Council Subcommittee on Finance, have been meeting at least once a week over the last few months. They've met with, as the chairperson will say, various department heads. They really go through this budget with a fine tooth comb. They have submitted their document to the council to give us an idea or their thoughts on the budget. We are doing this tonight. We'll have a discussion on the budget. We will open up the budget and new business, and then we will have further discussion. Then we will pass the budget at a subsequent meeting. But again, I want to thank Matt, I want to thank Cameron Chavez, Brent Farrell, William Gall, Joe Hanlon, John Masero, Shannon Poolhouse, and also the Council Subcommittee on Finance, with Counselor DeRoz, Counselor Tassini, and Counselor Belcher. It's really amazing to watch these meetings, to attend these meetings. They were better attended this year than they've been in the past, and they take this so seriously, and the citizens of Winthrop are in your debt for the work you do. So without further ado, I'll hand it over to Chairman Gorkowitz for your presentation.
Mr. Gorkowitz, before you begin, show everybody that tie. That tie is awesome.
It's Father's Day, last year's Father's Day. I'm not sure if you can see the.
Town of Winthrop.
I don't know if that has.
Was it the town of Winthrop?
Yeah, it's the town of Winthrop. That's fantastic, I love it.
AE is showing on me.
Yeah. You'll need some magnifying glasses, but it's probably there.
We all want one.
But anyway. Thank you again, Matt.
My daughter will be excited to know that you spotted it, so thank you. Well, you've, thank you, Council President, thank you, members of the town council. You've covered my first slide here, which is to really thank the members of the Finance Commission. It was a real pleasure working with them and members of the town council who come together to form the Finance Commission. So there is a Citizens Advisory Finance Commission, which is chaired by Karen Chavez. And of course, the town council has its Finance Subcommittee of the Town Council, which is chaired by John DeRoz. And for the purposes of deliberating on the budget on an annual basis, these two entities come together to form the Finance Commission, which I'm fortunate and honored to chair. So I want to thank all of the members of the Finance Commission, and for all of the town council members who were engaged throughout this process, so thank you. Next slide. I just want to kind of highlight the roles of the Finance Commission as it comes together. We are required by Town Charter, it's not a may, it's a shall, file a report with the town council, making recommendations concerning the annual town budget. Those recommendations may or may not have amendments. It's not required that we make amendments to the town manager's proposed budget, but we certainly can, and in the past, we have done that. Our, the charter does give the Finance Commission a lot of power in terms of trying to, being able to access full and complete information on all finance matters regarding the town. And I just want to thank the town manager. I want to thank Tony Marino. I want to thank Sarah Johnson and Robbie Powers, who have attended virtually every one of these meetings and provided us with all of that information and all of the data that we requested throughout the process. So thank you for that and for making it both timely and user-friendly. We began our deliberations on April 4th, when the town manager presented his budget to the council, and we have been meeting with department heads and deliberating over the course of the last two months. We presented the town council with a copy of our report in a word, in a memo format on June 2nd, and I'm here today to just simply review for you those recommendations and discuss, are there any questions you might have on it? Departments that we met with are on the left. We did, through the work of Karen and the town clerk, I want to thank you both for all the work you did to sort of organize and keep these meetings scheduled and the agendas posted. All of the folks you see, department heads on the left, were we met with, and they all met and provided testimony. And all those that are on the right were offered an opportunity, but did not come in to provide testimony. I wanted to just also take a moment to thank all of the department heads throughout the town who came and provided testimony. The information they provided was thorough, it was complete, and it was very insightful. I think the conversations were very good, and I think for the most part, and I'll speak for the commission members when I say that, I think we're pleased with the work that is being done across the town by many of the dedicated department heads that you have working for you, and I think the residents should be pleased about that. So thanks to all of them for their testimony and their assistance throughout this process. With that, I'll talk about our FY '25 budget highlights. And I'm going to start by just highlighting a few of the things that have been highlighted in the town manager's proposed budget. First, the budget is, most importantly, lives within available revenues and is balanced. And it continues to support a double A bond rating, which is a recent upgrade that the town received, and something that I think is very important to highlight and for the residents to know and have confidence in the financial management of the town. This budget also, I'm pleased to say, closes a bit of a structural gap that we had resulting from some of the ARPA funds that have been used over the last couple of years. For the last two or three budgets, there has been about 212, well, last year was about $225,000 of ARPA funds that was used to help support operations. Those are obviously one-time funds, and the use of those creates what we call a structural deficit going forward. And so this year, the budget is able to cover that. I'll explain a little bit of the revenues that have been used to do that, but it does help close that structural gap, at least for the next few years, and we think that's a positive development. The budget continues to maintain what we call a base budget document, meaning that there's, in 2024, this current year budget, there was a budget that was developed that highlights all of the department, town department expenditures versus that of the school department, and creates two essentially base budget documents that highlight those respective budgets. And I think that creates much more transparency in terms of what the city, what the town department is able to fund versus the school department, and this '25 budget maintains that and creates that level of transparency, which I think is important. It also includes an increase in the health insurance premium that covers the town's health insurance contributions for its employees. I think that's important to highlight. Over the last couple of years, there's been some exposure in the funding for that. And in this year, and what we're seeing in healthcare insurance generally across the market, is that the premiums are going up quite a bit, a 9.6% increase for FY '25. So to not only cover that increase, but to make sure that these line items, both for the town and the school, are properly funded, I think is a positive thing to highlight. It fully funds all the collective bargaining agreements, which are under contract through the end of fiscal year '25, which is good news. It continues to support a $600,000 contribution to the Solid Waste Fund, which we'll talk a little bit later. I think it works well for fiscal year '24. I think there are some challenges going forward that we'll talk about, and it also includes a subsidy for both Parks and Recreation and the Rink, recognizing the services that those two enterprise funds provide to the residents of Winthrop. The next couple of slides just begin by sort of highlighting the revenues that are available to support this FY '25 budget. These charts, for the most part, are the same tables that you've seen in the town manager's budget when you received it. They're also the same charts that are in the report from the Finance Commission. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on them, but I am going to go through them rather quickly and try to provide a little bit more context. The one thing I will say for the members of the council who are reviewing the report, there is a little bit of a difference between the numbers I'm going to show you tonight and the numbers that appeared in the report dated June 2nd. That is because in my conversations with the town manager, we have, it's been suggested to me that there will be a recommendation to move $220,000 from free cash to help support the school department. That was not reflected in the report from the Finance Commission, but it is reflected in these numbers. So if you start to open up your report and compare the two, you'll see a slight difference. But if you start to do the math, it's about $220,000, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. The revenues that are available to support the town total $76.9 million, and they really sort of are comprised of, there are four major funds that I think support all of the operations of the town. The biggest is the general fund, and that's what most folks refer to when they talk about operations of the town, of the town, and you can see that at $61 million. Enterprise funds total about $14 million in revenues. Enterprise funds are equally important. Enterprise funds are set up to provide, to fund programs that, for which we charge a fee. So they're offsetting, and enterprise funds collect the fees and provide services. Examples of those, and there are six of them, there's the solid waste fund, there's the water and sewer, there's the rink, Parks and Recreation, and then the Harbor Master. So those are all enterprise funds that are set up to collect revenue from users, user revenues, for the purposes of the service they provide. And then on a much smaller scale, there's a few revolving funds, and then the capital stabilization, which is used to fund capital items. It is one-time money, but reoccurring in the sense that there's a capital stabilization outlay every year. A lot of the capital stabilization funds are used to, in this year's capital budget, purchasing some police vehicles and some other capital that is more than operational, but still important for the operations of the town. The next page, focusing on general fund revenues, so the $61 million that we typically think of when we think about general fund revenues. I apologize, that says FY '24, it should say '25. Total $61 million. It represents about 64% of the town's revenue, which comes from property taxes. You can see it there at $39.4 million for FY '25. State aid represents about 15.6, and local receipts represent about $6.9 million. Local receipts are primarily comprised of, there's two big ones, it's motor vehicle excise at $2.1 million, and our pilot, our mitigation monies, which I know this council has been talking about, and earlier today had a discussion about pilot from both MWR and Masport. So those two things, those two items alone comprise roughly, you know, four, almost $5 million of the $6.9 million in local receipts. I will point out that the, I have highlighted in a separate line here, the free cash to support the school department at $220,000. That is a difference between what you see in the report, and I did point, highlight that. The other thing I would highlight about the property tax is the new growth revenue. For the past couple of years, we've seen new growth come in at about $250,000. This year, the town manager's budget recommends $550,000. That's higher than what we've seen in the past, but actual collections from this year were $511,000. And a lot of that has to do with the work that our town assessor's office is doing with our building inspectors, Inspection Services Division, to make sure that the backlog and permits and, and building permits and other things are being, are being collected and being acted upon. And that was something that the Finance Commission recommended last year, which was to try to increase capacity in the Inspection Services Department to help with what we knew were an influx of additional permits coming in. I will just say, on the levy limit, you know, we do, the town does utilize every bit of its levy limit. There is no excess capacity. Some cities and towns don't necessarily always use that, but we do. And you can see here that, you know, it generates about $861,000 a year. It's not a lot, and it does, you know, creates, present some challenges. And here, you can see the new growth at 550. So we do have very little excess levy capacity. We use almost everything the town has available. And right now, the average single-family tax bill is roughly $7,102. That's based on FY '23 data. Switching over from revenues to general fund expenditures, total FY '25 expenditures total 7.76.9 million. If you actually just want to flip to the next slide, I have a table that kind of lays it out a little bit better. Actually, you can flip to the next one as well. I think this does a little bit better job highlighting where the general fund expenditures are going. You can see that roughly 25.8 of that, 25.2 of that goes to fund what we consider to be the core services of the town departments, public works, public safety. It covers the VOK educational. Those expenditures are not part of the school department, they are funded from the town side of the budget, as well as benefits and retirement pension benefits for town employees. That totals about $25.3 million, and it represents about 41% of all the expenditures. The school department totals $36.1 million, bringing the total budget to $61.4 for FY ' I will highlight on the next slide this concept of a base budget. So again, in FY '24, it was the first year where the town department and the school department each had their respective budgets, essentially creating a base for each. The goal was to, again, be more transparent about how the town's resources were divided between the town and the school budget, and FY '25 budget continues that practice. We think this is not only a best practice, but it's a lot of, it's how most cities and towns account for their expenditures between the school and the town departments. And so I think. And so I think that's an important change that was made last year and one that continues in this budget. If you go to the next slide, you can see how the base budget breaks down. You can see on the far right column, the total FY25 total of $61.4 million. And you can see how the town's budget is allocated to the town and to the school. And you can see it's a roughly 40, 60 split, not exactly, but pretty close to that. And then you can see how the new revenue and additional increases are allocated to both the town and the school budgets. Focusing for a moment on the education funding in this slide, I'm calling it education funding because it's not just simply the school department. The school department, as you can see here, is funded at $36.1 million. And the school department, because of the base budget concept, has all of the employee health insurance and retiree benefits. It carries the debt for the school buildings, as well as the Medicare workers' comp for those school employees. The town will have similar set of accounts that fund the same thing, but for the town employees. And so again, this is a way of allocating costs between the two and creating more transparency in terms of what the school budget actually funds. I added the Northeast Vocational School, as well as Essex Aggie and the Voke School debt to the bottom, because it is educational spending, but it is not part of the school department. But I wanted to represent it here so that you could see how much of the actual town budget is still going to the school department. I will say that in the testimony that we heard from the town, this budget that's proposed for FY25, the town manager's budget, falls short of what the school department, the school committee voted on by $2.8 million. So the school has what they refer to as a needs-based budget approved by the school committee, which is $2.8 million more than what the town is able to provide in FY25. In fact, the amount that we're able to provide through the allocation you see on the previous page, the 36.1 million, falls short of what they call a level service budget, meaning that there will not be sufficient funds to continue to provide the same level of services in FY25 that they're providing now without some additional resources. And right now, that's about $1.5 million. Without some additional revenues, the superintendent and the school department will have to start making some difficult decisions about how to, to cover that. In some cases, they may be able to prepay some expenses, but in others, it may mean not filling vacancies and doing other things that you typically do throughout the year to impose financial controls. But all of that will start to erode the services provided in the school department. The other thing I will just mention too about the Voke School is that, you know, from FY, in FY24, we were funding about $82,000 for the Voke School. That went up to 240 in FY25. By FY26, that'll be $492,000. And in the next few years, we expect these programs, if you combine the increase in debt service along with enrollment, to be anywhere from 1.6 to 1.8 million of our town budget. So there's a big expense that, you know, we see coming down the pike on that one, and it's something that we need to continue to highlight and keep our eyes on. Some of the major cost drivers that affect both the school and town budgets are increased health insurances, increased charges, as I mentioned, to the, on the debt service, particularly for the Voke School. As a result, you know, while you do see increases year over year, I just want to be clear that, you know, I think this is very much a maintenance-level budget for the town departments. While they're able to continue to provide some of the services that they provided last year, it gets increasingly difficult as these costs increase. And so even though you see the budgets growing, they're, they're being used to fund things like health insurance costs, COLAs, and other inflationary costs that the departments are spending on just commodities and the things that they need to do their, their services. So despite the increases, this is very much a fairly lean budget and one that I think represents a maintenance budget for most, every town department. In terms of a fiscal outlook, I think it's important to think about the long-term financial pressures. I will say that our recommendation as a Finance Commission to the town council is that we are not recommending any funding changes, as we have in the past. We think the town manager's budget has done a really good job, again, living within existing resources and funding the departments to be able to carry out what they need to do. That's not to say that there aren't requests that went unfunded, and there's things that department heads would like to do more of. But in the past, you know, there were certain exposures, there were things that, as a Finance Commission, we felt we wanted to address. This year, I think, in fact, over the last couple of years, I want to give credit to the town manager and his finance team. I think they've covered a lot of the exposures, and I think we feel like we have a budget that adequately funds most of the programs and services, again, to the extent that, you know, obviously there are requests that don't always get, get funded. As a Finance Commission, I think we're trying to turn our attention to thinking more long-term. And we have some recommendations that talk about long-term forecasting and some of the things we're trying to do. But here are some, just thinking ahead, some pressures that we think continue to be issues to, to think about. One is ARPA funding is, you know, being depleted, and that's an area that we need to continue to look at. Debt service for the Voke Schools, as I mentioned, is increasing, the football field replacement, middle school repairs. We do have an OPEB liability that we'll talk about in a little bit. And we know that there is continued pressure on our capital budget. There are a number of big capital projects that need to be, need to be dealt with. And some of those are large-scale projects totaling over $200 million, as you've probably seen through the town's capital plan. The school department also has some significant needs. I mentioned the, the fact that this budget falls short of about $2.8 million to fund what they believe is a needs-based budget. And I will just say, you know, I think the needs-based budget is, is really, as it is described, it meets the, the needs and expectations that I think many in the town have for the school department. It's not certainly aspirational in any regard. And of course, there are some positions that are being funded from grants that need to be covered, particularly ARPA grants and ESAR grants that were used to, to help support some critically needed positions. And then I think on the capital side, you know, there's the ongoing discussion around the needs for the firehouse. Those are not getting any better. We now have a facility needs assessment by Brightly, and that allows us to have a better understanding, building by building, what our capital portfolio needs are. That will require some investment. Water capital plan by Woodward and Curran, another report that has been delivered that actually lays out, again, a pretty aggressive and ambitious plan for dealing with those capital needs. And then, of course, the decarbonization of our buildings and our assets, which will require a funding source going forward. I think some of the ways to deal with some of these long-term pressures on the next slide is, you know, obviously, we're doing very well in terms of our pension liability and, and funding that, and that becomes a resource for us. I think it's also going to be a way of dealing with some of our other liabilities like OPEB, but it may create some flexibility. We do have some debt service that is rolling off. I think we have a very, you know, conservative debt portfolio, and that is, over the years will, in the coming years, work to our advantage. And then, of course, long-term strategies are needed, probably around debt exclusions and overrides, to think about how we fund some of the more key operations. So very quickly, this brings us to our, our recommendations as a Finance Commission. They've all been highlighted in the memo. But I think the first and the biggest thing that we spent quite a bit of time talking about is, the Finance Commission is recommending that the town council consider an override, a Proposition Two and a Half override, to support the school budgets for FY26. As I mentioned, the FY25 budget falls short of the needs-based budget, and at this point is falling roughly $1.5 million short. That's even with the $220,000 from free cash to support what a level service budget would be for the school. While that will require, I think, some challenges and some tough decisions, I think not addressing that is going to lead to, from tough decisions to bad decisions down the road, and we think there needs to be some consideration of that. In doing so, we think that it'd be important to consider what the school committee has voted on as a needs-based budget, but then also think about how a needs-based budget would be sustained either a three- or five-year period down the road, so that we don't fall back into a situation where we're having the school budget erode. I think, just to add a little bit of context, there are a lot of towns right now who are feeling the constraints and the pressures of Proposition Two and a Half and have been doing overrides. Winthrop's last override was 15 years ago, roughly 2009. And so, you know, there were a number of ARPA funds, ESAR funds made available to the town and the school that allowed them, I think, to address some of the challenges that otherwise would have been, the town council would have had to deal with much earlier. So I think in that respect, it's good. On the other hand, those funds have now been depleted, and it's been quite some time now since we have taken a really good look at the needs of the, of the school department. I will also just say that, you know, I think once there, it, once, in addition to developing a recommendation for an override, I think there needs to be a recommendation of how the funds are then utilized and, and programmed into the school budget over a period of time. And again, this takes, I think, brings to the table a long view and the need to really think ahead about what, what we can do for, for '26, and then how we sustain that over, again, a three- or five-year period. The other recommendation is to encourage the town manager and the Finance Department to continue what they've been doing, which is to really kind of focus on efficiency and effectiveness. And it's been really sort of demonstrated in the last couple of budgets. I talked about some of the funding exposures that have been addressed over the years. We think this budget really does present a fair and accurate representation of what's, what's available in terms of the resources and how it should be allocated. We know the town manager is in the process of hiring a deputy, which the Finance Commission supports. We're pleased that many of the key positions that have been vacant for a long time are now filled and filled with people that have incredible expertise and are serving the people well. And, you know, I think the work that's been done between the Assessors Department and the Inspektional Services Department was really highlighted during our deliberations this year, and an example of, I think, some of the things that have been improving. We also want to talk about some of the transparency efforts that has been happening with the document itself, certainly much more content and much more information being provided, which is helpful. I spoke about the elimination of the structural deficit. I will just say that while I think this structural deficit has been eliminated, it's been eliminated for a couple of years. I think we've bought ourselves some time. Again, we had $225,000 worth of ARPA funds being used to support operations. We are now covered that with reoccurring revenue. Some of this revenue, I think we can expect for the next two to three years, but it's probably not going to sustain. We're experiencing a little bit of a blip because of the backlog that existed between the Assessors Department and the Inspektional Services Department to try to bring some of that, get some of those permits processed and to collect some of that revenue. So I think this is a good thing, but I do think the town council will need to continue to think about that, structurally, what that means, as that revenue might start to level off over the next few years. The other one that I think is important to, to think about is the solid waste enterprise fund, which most people think of as the trash fee. There are a couple of issues. One is that this year's enterprise fund is relying on $200,000 worth of retained earnings. That just happens to be one-time money that is sitting in the fund and available. While that is helpful for this year, it does create a structural deficit, as I mentioned, going forward, and one that the town council will need to think about addressing. In the course of addressing that structural deficit, there are a few other things that you'll probably have to also address, and it makes sense to probably do it all together. One is that the trash contract is coming up for renewal at the end of this year. And, you know, we expect that it's probably not going to come in at or below what the current rate is. And so there'll probably be some additional expenditures and pressures to deal with that. And we also know that the Housing Authority, while contributing $20,000 to the trash fund now, we do think that that's sort of not sufficient to cover the services that they're getting, in a commensurate way with the way others in the town are paying. So we're asking the town manager to work to try to renegotiate that and perhaps over time, get it to reflect more of the actual costs. I think overall, all of these pressures between the contract going up and the structural deficit will result in the town needing to do one of two things, either contribute more to the solid waste fund through its general fund operations, which creates pressure everywhere else, or to make some adjustments to the trash fee. It may make, make sense to look at that as you think about the next multi-year contract and try to sync them up in a way that has them sort of aligned in terms of what those costs look like. I talked a little bit about the opportunities for strategic planning. A lot of these were also, I will just say, repeat recommendations from last year. I, reason why we repeated them here again, we've added a little bit more around the bipartisan infrastructure law, the IRA, and, and some of the other things regarding decarbonization and climate resiliency, because I think it's a, something that we hadn't discussed from a long-term strategic planning perspective before, but one that I think will need to happen. I think the town manager is making, along with his finance team, some positive steps in this direction, starting with the capital budget. And I think we're looking forward to seeing perhaps some more long-term forecasts in terms of the operating budget to really start to map out three or five years at a time, so that the decisions we make today are really informed by where we think we're going to be in the, in the out years. With that said, there are other things that I think will affect the long-term finances of the town, OPEB being one of those. Again, I think there is a plan to use the current pension funding schedule to then fill the, the, the liability that will be the OPEB liability. I think it would be good to try to sort of map that out a little bit more clearly and how we think about that. Pilot payments are something, again, where those contracts are coming due for renegotiation, and how we think about the town making sure that it gets, you know, sort of the revenue it's, it's owed for the, the proper mitigation, for the services that, important services that are being provided, but with town assets. Health insurance contributions is another one. As we see the cost in health insurance continue to rise, it may be necessary to look at, on a prospective basis, whether or not we should change as a town, this percentage split between what the town pays and employees pay. And again, this would be prospective. We're not looking to, to change it for folks that are currently in place. But again, this is thinking more long-term. That over a period of time, it may pay dividends, but not something that would be something that you would use to balance the budget in year one. There were a few other smaller things. In talking with the Harbor Master, there was some dredging that was potentially needed around Stink Island, and we wanted to seek some, some federal funds for that. Inspektional Services did actually make a pretty compelling case around trying to get some tablets for their work to become more real-time, and actually to provide better service in terms of taking pictures and being able to document things a little bit better. And then, of course, we continue to believe that, you know, a debt exclusion for the purpose of the fire station will be important in order to shore up that asset. We know it's one of our biggest deferred maintenance facility asset problems that the town is facing, and we still think that there will be a need to do something there. The problem's not going away, and it's not getting any better. And the testimony with the fire chief, that was certainly documented yet again, and the concerns there are very real. So with that, I hope I didn't go too long. I want to thank you. I want to bring it back to the Finance Commission, and thank you for all of the, the work that the Finance Commission's done and the partnership that we have with the counselors who sit on it. I think it creates a great synergy and brings our perspective to the work that you all do, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I can't thank you enough for the fact that, you know, talking to the Finance for 20 minutes isn't the most exciting thing. Nobody fell asleep, and they were all intently listening. And I think that because it was just clear and concise, it was well thought out, and you could see the time and effort that you guys put in and the passion that you have for what you do. And it's, it's greatly appreciated, and I think I'll be commenting, it was well thought out, it was factual, and it was transparent. I will ask, before you leave now, I'll ask if there's any questions on the council, Council of Monaco.
Hi. Thank you for that. That was really in-depth and informative. I just wanted to know, you know, you talked about both a debt exclusion for a fire station, and you talked about a Prop Two and a Half override for the school department, which, you know, obviously, that's a lot to ask the taxpayers. The question I have for you, are you aware of legislation that's currently going through the State House that would actually give our schools more money? That has already passed, I believe, the House of Representatives, and should probably be wrapped up by June or July in the State House, that would actually give our schools more money? Have you planned on that, or are you aware of that?
Couple of things on that. So the, the Commonwealth's operating budget, its General Appropriation Act, is currently in conference committee, so it has passed both the House and Senate. The House and Senate have, I think, both added a little bit of money to the school budgets versus what the governor had recommended. It's the per pupil amount has gone up.
Yep.
But that number, I think, is the same in both the House and Senate. I think the town manager has factored that into the planning. I think the school department recognizes that for what it is. So I don't think that for the purposes of what's before you today, that you should expect to see any additional funding beyond what has already been programmed into the town manager's budget for the school.
Okay. Thank you for your answer. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor DeRozan.
Just briefly, thank you. For me, as a new counselor and a new Finance Committee Chair, it was incredibly instructive. For me, as a new councilor and a new Finance Committee Chair, it was incredibly instructive, educational. When I was handed the binder, honestly, at the beginning of the process, it was quite overwhelming. For my peers here who have been through this process multiple times before, you know, there's familiarity with that, but it was incredibly well done. Kudos also to Karen, Shannon, everyone else who served. The institutional knowledge and the history of each and every department, for those of you who attended some of these meetings over the course of the past basically three months, each and every town department comes to us with its own history, its own needs, and it was a fantastic process. And I would agree with the Council President, your recommendations are concise, reflective of what all of us on the Finance Commission jointly discussed. And I'll just call out one thing that just really jumps out, you know, probably more so than anything else in the presentation. Most towns, including the town of Melrose, where I lived for eight years and owned a home, did overrides roughly every five to seven years, exactly as you said in your presentation. We haven't done one for 15. So I think it's our job to, you know, make sure that the folks in the town understand why that's required, as you expressed in the presentation, and make sure that everybody completely understands what the intent is to do with that money. And the superintendent was, did a fantastic job presenting that night with the schools. So she is quite descriptive and prescriptive about what she would like to see happen with that money, and it definitely fills gaps that we need in the school system in a big way. So thank you for all your hard work. We are fortunate. I think you're another example of a person we happen to have as a resident of Winthrop with your day job with incredible expertise. So thank you, Matt.
Thanks. It's a team effort, though, so I appreciate that, and there's a lot of contributions that I certainly don't, certainly the history that many members of the Commission bring that I don't have, so it's great to have the folks that we have serving on that Commission.
Councilor Martin.
I too want to echo the same sentiment. Thank you so much. And I was impressed with the fact that you made no suggestions this year. So Tony's doing his job well, and the finance team are doing their job well. But I also liked how you described it as a maintenance budget, so we're just keeping up with the inflation and the different rising costs, just trying to keep up with it. There was two questions I had for you. One was that you said that the new growth, while being very good at around $500 and plus thousand dollars, you weren't sure that it was sustainable. I was curious about where those, the new growth was coming from specifically, and if we could just dive down a little bit on that. The other question I had was, you said that we were $2.8 million short of a level service budget for the school department, but then you said a second number that was $1.5 million short. Can you explain the discrepancy between those two numbers?
Yes. Let me start with the first, which is the new growth. Historically, Winthrop has had roughly experienced a new growth in the neighborhood of anywhere from around 200 to 250,000, probably more like 225, and that's been a normal pattern. It's been sort of a steady, moderate growth, a manageable growth. Last year, those numbers jumped up to 511, in part because I think there's obviously a lot of building, a lot of folks redoing home improvements, and there was a backlog in both building permits and being able to both issue and collect the revenue from those. And then I think there was some gaps between, with the Assessors Office in terms of updating their records and what we've seen over the past year with the folks now working much more collaboratively is that they're dealing with the backlog. One of the things I think that got recommended last year was bringing on an additional inspector to try to help with that, and so some of the efforts and some of the changes we've recommended are having some fruits to that labor that's going on, and what we're seeing is that additional revenue coming in from all of that activity you see around town. I think based on testimony we received from the departments, we expect that that will probably continue on for another year or two at that level. Could you expect 550 indefinitely? Probably not, so it'll probably start to come down as they work through that backlog. The number might be higher than what we've seen in the past, just as the assessors, you know, get the records caught up with that in terms of, you know, people, you know, converting a basement or building an addition or whatever, but it probably won't stay at that level for a long time.
You mind me asking, is the new growth exempt from the 2.5% maximum growth?
It's...
Because, isn't it revenue of, let's say, a percentage of a build? And the build is, rises with inflation, so wouldn't that be exempt from it, so we continue to see growth in that?
So, probably not the best person to ask, but my understanding is that there's a couple of things I think at play here with the new growth. It's the, it's the, it's the actual buildings permits themselves, and then it's sort of, if you're doing something new. So for example, if a basement is now becoming a bedroom or a livable space that didn't exist before, that increases the value, and so I suppose from an assessors' point of view, there could be additional revenue because now your valuation is higher, and your property taxes, what you pay for is based on an evaluation. So I think there is some impact of that, but I think what we're seeing here is that some of those records haven't been updated, and so we weren't necessarily collecting the revenue from some of the activity that's been happening over the last couple of years.
Okay.
And I think, you know, they can, I think, better describe to you what they've done to improve the communication and be in a better position to collect that revenue.
Thank you.
Oh, and then, with respect to the school budget, I just, it is important to understand, I think, this difference, and this is, you know, the school committee voted for what they consider to be a needs-based budget. It's a $2.8 million increase over where the town is funding the schools currently. That needs-based budget, if you were to look at it, funds a number of critical positions across the school, including a band. I don't know if you know, we don't have a band.
I do know that.
I think most towns, it's a surprise, right? If you're walking down the street, I think most folks would expect that we probably have a band, but we don't. So, you know, I guess, you know, one, so I think there's a lot that the school committee is trying to do with some critical positions. Some of those were grant-funded positions that are critical to the school, that they need to maintain. They're $2.8 million short based on the budget before you today. In addition, the 1.5 represents a shortfall between what it would cost to just provide level services. So they're not able to provide what they would like to provide, which is what the school committee voted on, and in fact, the budget we have is falling short of just even doing that maintenance that I just suggested to you, level services, not even be able to provide level service, and that what we'll see in FY '25 is an erosion of services in the school department. And I think the superintendent has plans to try to minimize that and try to sort of prepay certain expenses, but certainly will mean that certain positions don't get filled and there'll be fiscal controls that'll be applied to the school budget that, you know, will result in, you know, some services that were provided this year that perhaps won't be able to be provided next year.
And just to be clear, when this override was suggested, the, that would apply for fiscal year 2026, so this 2025 that we would be voting on in the near future, what is, is what it will be? There's not like something we can save, it's going to basically be the superintendent's job and our job to try to help her as much as possible, but, so that's what you're saying, is that...
I think that's right. I think the current budget as proposed with the town manager recommended an additional $800,000 for the school. That was it. $800,000 increase over fiscal year '24 to '25. The health insurance costs alone and the collective bargaining costs for the teachers alone far exceeded the $800,000. I think there's an attempt by the Town Council to try to find an additional $220,000 from free cash to get that to be, you know, $1,020,000. That will help, but it certainly is not going to address the growing cost that the school is dealing with, particularly when, again, health insurance costs and COLAs for the teachers are growing at a rate that is greater than what the increase will be year over year. And so that's what I mean by there being an erosion of services. It's just simply the cost of providing that education is growing at a rate, it's faster than the revenue to support it.
Thank you very much, Matt.
Any other questions? Yes?
Hello, Jim.
How are you doing?
Wonderful, wonderful. I'm finally talking, yes. This is only my second meeting, by the way. I just want to commend you on a presentation as well. I'm new to the council. The hill is steep, I'm learning as we go here, and again, it's a hell of a presentation, and again, layman's terms as far as I'm concerned. The question I have is the vocational increase of monies. Is that due to the increased students enrollment from the town due to the new building of that vocation up there in Wakefield?
There's two components to that. There is an enrollment component that is increasing, that I think, that's going up from fiscal year '24 to '25, but the other thing is the debt service associated with that new school, which gets shared by all of the member districts. And that's what I was referring to when we start thinking down the road. By FY '26, we're going to be spending $492,000, and FY '24, we're spending $82,000. So it's increasing dramatically, and by, you know, I forget, I think, five years out, five or six years out, we'll be spending something close to a million, a million, three, million, four on the Volk School program. That does not impact the school department budget, that is funded out of the town budget, so it's additional pressure and constraint on what is already a constrained budget in terms of what we're trying to do with other departments. But it's growing disproportionately to the revenue and to what other departments are receiving year over year. So it's gonna, it's gonna have the effect of taking resources away from other things.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Vocational school fills an incredible need, and it's great for the children of Winthrop to be able to participate in it, and along with a grand new building, which is part of our cost at $460,000, they'll have increased enrollment of 25%. So additionally, if you look, we approximately, we're around 65 odd kids that go to the vocational school, and if you, you know, play the math out and say, our enrollment should be able to increase by 25%, we could have another 14 kids, which is credible for the kids, but it comes with a cost, right? So we just have to be cognizant of that, and some of our really proven financial planning with our retirement system has given us potentially, I hope, some sort of a cushion that's going to soften that blow a little bit, but it's a great opportunity for the children of Winthrop to be able to participate, but it's a cost. And there's two vocational schools. There's the vocational school that, no, it's technical, and there's Essex Technical School, which is much smaller in terms of a monetary contribution from the town. It's in the $120,000 range, but that's also added on top of the 1.2 or 3 right now for vocational schools.
Thanks.
Other comments? Again, I can't thank you enough. We will bring up the budget and new business. We will have a ton of motions if you would refer to finance. Finance will have a meeting. We will have a special meeting of the council next Tuesday to vote on the budget, and again, that's the charter and some of the data that we're within. But again, I can't thank the Finance Commission, Citizens Finance Committee, the Town Council Subcommittee on Finance, the presentation. Not all is great news that people want to hear, but I mean, it's real news, so thank you again, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you. Public comments? Seeing none?
Yes. Next.
Yes, John.
Hi, John Morgan, Precinct 4, and a proud member of the Winthrop Commission on Disabilities. Tomorrow night at the E.B. Newton, in the Lyceum Room at 6 o'clock, we're going to have our fourth and final, in our speaker series. We're going to be talking about the advocacy and how to go about it, and we at the WC of the, are very fortunate to have two members who are national advocates and will have an enormous amount of information if anybody who watches to learn, it would be a great opportunity for anyone who has ever gone through the headache of insurances and doctors, that this is, this is a great opportunity to learn something, and that, I hope, will help, that will help a lot of people, and thank you.
Thank you. Again, that's tomorrow evening, Wednesday, June 5th, at 6 o'clock at the Lyceum Room at the E.B. Newton School, and learning how to effectively advocate for yourself and others. So thank you, John, for giving that to our attention, and thanks to the Winthrop Commission on Disabilities for sponsoring that. Yes, Max.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Marchinovich, I'm from Precinct 3. Some of you have met me before, some haven't. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Tonight, I'm excited to introduce a working group. We are calling ourselves Winthrop Working Together, group of Winthrop citizens united to foster collaboration and problem-solving in our community. As Winthrop Working Together, we're not defined by yes versus no or left versus right. Instead, we're focused on bridging gaps and addressing what we see as the most pressing concerns: housing, climate change, and vulnerability, and budget issues. Our mission is to create a welcoming and inclusive environment where every voice is heard and every idea is valued. We aim to harness the collective power of Winthrop's residents to develop sustainable solutions and ensure a vibrant future for all of us. For more detailed information on our vision, ongoing projects, I invite you all to visit our website at winthroptogether.org. Thank you, and looking forward to working with all.
Scott.
I wanted to follow up with what Brian just said by pointing out that we are Winthrop Working Together. We envision a Winthrop where everyone belongs, where everyone can find a home that meets their needs, and where we tackle our greatest problems through collaboration together. We are here tonight to share our message that we too are Winthrop, and we do not say no to 3A. Instead, we say, let's work on this, let's engage in this process that has only just begun to explore what zoning to allow more multifamily homes in parts of our community might look like, how it might actually work or not work, and what else we need to do as a community to solve the problems we face collectively together.
Clara Rojave, Precinct 3, part of the Winthrop Together Group. I want to continue saying that not only housing, but climate change, the relationships with Masport, NWR. Thank you for your explanation about town budget. Town budget is important for everybody. Those are really serious paramount issues that we face as a community, and we believe that we must tackle them as a collective, not separately, and not by yes and no, with votes or with answers. It's a community of individuals that as a part of the Winthrop community need to address these issues. And as a strategic, we need process, and we need a strategic course of action and willingness to learn and listen to each other. I know sometimes that might be difficult, but it's important to advance and progress. We recognize the very real challenges that face our town, and they are not a small challenge, they are really serious for the future and for our region and for our state. The stream urgency behind them is important, and we say we are Winthrop. We believe that we must move forward, working together, colorblind, and so all the voices are heard together. So it's colorblind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Silian Alios, Precinct 1. So I am here representing the Winthrop Says No to 3A group. I want you to be aware that it's not just the typical faces that you see at the Town Council meetings, and I want you to be aware that there are several residents that are fighting against this and are against 3A. These are residents who elected you as public officials, and they are residents who expect you to represent them when it comes down to a vote. Those names include Danny Abbott, Kathy Abbott, Mary Jane Abbott, Paul Abbott, Brenda Akoni, Karen Akoni, Kelly Akoni, Martin Akoni, Mary Ellen Akoni, Michael Adamson Jr., Gabrielle Anderson, Robert O'Hearn, Jennifer Alioto, Kylie Alioto, Michael Alioto, Sean Alioto, Sarah Als, Alyssa Emerald, Deborah Emerald, Sarah Emerald, Annette Anderson, Brian Anderson, Harry Anthopoulos, Mary Ann Anthopoulos, Liz Arkin, Bradford Armstrong, Catherine Afurro, Norina Afurro, Linda Austin, Ken Avery, Janine Ayers, Linda Bicala, Mary Calsumito, Gary Capone, Janet Capone, Christopher Capuccio, Jerry Capuccio, Catherine Capuccio, Terry Care, Anne Cargill, William Cargill, Paul Carucio, Barbara Carter, Talyn Carvallo, Ed Cash, Mary Ann Cash, Carolyn Catalano, Jake Fataldo, Joseph Fataldo, Mark Chaplin, Karen Chaddis, Suzanne Chidina, Brenda Christopher, Stephen Christopher, Michelle Church, Robert Church, Carolyn Champa, Charlene Chardy, John Chardy, Joe Clark, Patty Clark, Paul Claus. Claus, Kathy Cody, Gina Coelho, Kathleen Coffey, Rita Marie DeCiscio, William DeCiscio, Dan Doherty, Carol Dolan, Tom Dolan, Melissa Dolan, Sean Dolan, Linda Donahue, Sean Donahue, Jenna Dorr, Jerry Dorr, Jill Dorr, Kevin Dorr, Maury Dorr, Brenda Dorso, Jack Dowd, Matt Driscoll, Megan Driscoll, Ann Drogen, Arlo Drogen Carter, Nancy Dudley, Diane Duplin, Harrison Duplin, Joseph Duplin, Timothy Duplin, Gil Dwyer, Beth Girl, Gerard, Kerry Eden, Yvonne Edison, Jason Edwards, Jessica Edwards, James Fusillo, Kelly Fusillo, Stephanie Fusillo, Michael Fuller, Grace Gaggy, Stephen Gaggy, Carolyn Gaggy, Jim Gallagher, Pat Gallagher, David Gallo, Kathy Gallo, Ryan Gagan, Yanni Gagan, Eric Gaynor, Tony Jamalaro, Susan Janaco, Michael Girassi, Susan Girassi, Melissa Giacconi, Jack Galoney, Paul Giacaloni, Paul Giella, Peter Gill, Eric Gillis, John Gillis, Mary Gillis, William Gillis, Dave Gerard, Jessica Jacindu, Stephen Jacindu, Jake Golding, Scott Howard, Cheryl Howard, Allison Howell, Robert Howell, David Hubbard, Robert Hubbard, Billy Hubert, Bobby Hubert, Dan Hubert, Kathy Hubert, Kim Hurley, Nancy Hurley, Patty Hurley Felth, Gina Iacocucci, Bob Empemba, Mary Ann Empemba, Shannon James, Pete Jervich, Robert Kaiser, James Calliger, Kate Calliger, Linda Calliger, Gail Corigianas, Diane Kelly, Eileen Kelly Johnson, Richard Kennedy, David Kenahan, Kathleen Kenahan, Colin Kinsella, Carrie Kinsella, Scott Kinsella, Charles Kling, and Jan Kling. I hopefully did that under three minutes.
And Rob DiMarco.
Hi, Kathleen Cabuccio, forty-nine, Waldemar Am. Continuing on Facili's list of Winthrop Says No. And just a quick thing, as Facili had mentioned, this is a wide variety of people. This is Winthrop. So this is not some specific subset of people. This is a lot of people in this town, so I think that needs to be clear. This isn't left or right. This is just a lot of people in Winthrop. So I'm happy, actually very happy, to continue with this list. I apologize for any mispronunciations. Danielle Martino, Justin Martino, Kim Martino, Lauren Martino, Louise Martino, Nick Martino, Peter Martino, Rob Martino, Gus Martucci, Minnie Martucci, Anthony Massa, Gina Massa, Tracy Massey, Bob Masterson, Mary Ann Matarazzo, Ron Matarazzo, Dave Mazzachelli, I'm sorry, Frank Mazzachelli, Paul Mazzachelli, Rose Mazzachelli, Annabelle McAdams, Gary McAdams, Maureen McAdams, Deborah McCarthy, Jordan McCaffern, or McCaffern? Sorry, Sean McClarity, Donna McDade, Dave McDonald, Linda McDonald, Matthew McGreal, Brian McGuire, Kelly McKinnon, Dennis McLaughlin, Jonathan Parker, Kelly Parker, Ryan Parker, Dan Parker, Steve Paul, Todd Peltier, Lisa Penny Baker, Heather Pereira, Stephen Pereira, Bella Parotti, Jeff Parotti, Sue Parotti, Karen Perrin, Brian Perrin Senior, Brian Perrin Junior, Christine Pesari, Kaylee Peterson, Conlon Peterson, Greg Peterson, Jill Peterson, Joshua Phalen, Carol Mate, I'm sorry, Brad Peño, Brianna Peño, Elizabeth Polino, Jim Polino, Lorraine Polo, Frank Farmroy, Janice Farmroy, Sean Fulo, Shannon Fulo, Luke Papalo, Marilyn Papalo, Joanne Schizler, Holly Schlitzing, David Shonback, Michelle Shonback, Charlie Scott, Carly Selinger, Steve Selinger, Terry Selinger, Tim Selinger, Randy Semenza, Eve Sennett, Mark Sennett, Kim Seymour, Matt Seymour, Janine Sharpie, Dennis Shea, Melissa Shea, Michelle Sheen, Joe Sigarella, Sharon Sigarella, Barbara Sil, Cindy Silva, James Silva, Jay Silva, John Silva, Leanne Silverman, Peter Silverman, Marie Simeone, Amy Simeone, Garabino, Elaine Simpson, Paul Sigarella, Andrea Sigarella, Joe Sigarella, Ashley Trentfalia, John Trentfalia, Roseanne Trentfalia, George Tryant, Janet Tryant, Marie Trifoli Robinson, Joyce Trulisi, John Seotis, Nick Seotis, Lisa Seotis, Jeff Turco, Melissa Turco, Lorraine Verone, Paul Verone, Linda Vecchia, Peggy Vecchia, Ron Vecchia, Danielle Vecchio, Joseph Vecchio, Rosemary Vecchio, Lisa Van Deni, Antonius Vassaropolis, I apologize, Sophia Vassaropolis, Diana Vians, Brianna Brian Vians, Chris Visio, Jen Visio, John Watkins, Janessa Watkins, Laurie Watkins, John Walsh, Kathleen Walsh.
Thank you.
Sacco, Precinct Two, Diana Batchgalupo, Amanda Bagos, Zoe Bagos, Nancy Banfield, Dick Banks, Eric Barry, Judy Barry, Kalen Barry, Maureen Barry, Brendan Bats, Aline Bax, the Lois Bax, the Mop Bax, the Press, Brian Beatty, Jeannie Beatty, Steve Belmonte, Denise Visia, Robert Visia, Jackie Bigley Feudo, Karen Blake, Mary Blumendel, Joan Boerke, Denise Pokio, Mary Jane Boncorri, Tammy Boncorri, Marissa Bono, Charles Bournaud, Gillian Bournaud, Tony Gushay, Jessica Bedro, Josh Bedro, Lauren Bedro, Timmy Bedro, Kristen Coffey, Sharon Cohen, Claire Colzio, Debbie Consoli, Colleen Costa, Carol Costello, Pat Costello, Kim Costigan, Luis, Lois Costigan, sorry, Chris Costonas, Dan Cofflin, Jean Cofflin, Mary Crisafi, Dan Crowan, Maureen Crosby, Frances Cross, Jessie Cross, Tanya Cross, Bob Crossman, Connie Crossman, Vinnie Crossman, Bill Curran, Mary Cathy Curran, Eric Daniel Chuck, Tina Daniel Chuck, Gino DeAngelo, Dwight, Jeannie DeAngelo, Stacy DeAngelo, Kurti Bartolo, Linda DiBaccari, Carol DeCarlo, Nikki Emmanuel, Catherine Arruzioni Bartone, Mike Arruzioni, Chuck Essenheimer, Chuck Evans, Tootie Evans, Chucky Familari, David Fang, Nancy Fang, Rosemary Fabali, Mike Federico, Patty Federico, Andrew Feely, Christina Feely, Ken Feely, Donna Ferrara, Elizabeth Ferrara, Joey Ferrara, Michael Ferrara, Nicole Ferrara, Hava Ferrara, Paul Ferrara, Veronica Reno, Richard Reno Senior, John Ferulo, Mark Ferulo, Robin Ferulo, Al Festa, Arlene Festa, Claire Figler, Brendan Fitzpatrick, Denise Fitzpatrick, Jessica Fitzpatrick, Jenny Golick, Todd Green, Jill Gregory, Patricia Gregory, Adie Gray, Jim Griffin, Patty Griffin, Joe Griffiths, Jonathan Griffiths, Kelsey Griffiths, Kirsten Griffiths, Susan Griffiths, Patty Gunn, Timmy Gunn, Marie Hamilton, Phil Hamilton, Joe Hamilton, Judy Hamilton, Peter Hamilton, Rich Harkins, Michelle Harkins, Samantha Harrison, Carol Harvey, Kerry Harvey, Alice Haskell, Christine Haskell, Kathy Haskell, Leo Haskell, Alice Hayes, Grace Hayes, Jack Hayes, John Hayes, Sean Hayes, Joseph Kabasov, Michael Kabasov, Rachel Kabasov, Anthony Kabasov III, Anthony Kabasov Jr., Carol Kuntz, John Kuntz, Alexandra Kiriyuk, Kiriyaku, thank you, Ed Larry, Mary Lally, Danielle Lampros, Gary Landers, Judy Landers, Frank Landers, Vivian Leo, Kelsey Leonard, Nick Leonard, Gina Lewis, Alan Locke, Christian Locke, Kyle Wakanti, Denise Wakanti, Jimmy Logan, Kristen Logan, Paul Long, Susan Lundberg, Carol Long, John Lyons, Gary McAdams, Maureen McAdams, John Messero, Trudy Messero, James McKay.
Thank you. Yes.
Cheryl Howard, Precinct Two, Dorita Murray, Jane Malieri, Mary Ann Nicoletti, Richard Nicoletti, Stephen Nichols, Agnes Noble, Elizabeth O'Brien, Paula Bryan, Paula O'Donnell, Amy O'Keefe, Michael O'Keefe, Susan O'Keefe, Deborah O'Toole, David Osborne, Deborah Osborne, Peter Taviano, Rosemary Taviano, Catherine Pegano, Chris Palmer, Grace Palmer, Gina Palumbo, Debbie Pappas, Hannah Pocker, Jill Bucciini, Janine Cash, John Walsh, Kathleen Walsh, Nelson Rodriguez, Jennifer Rogers, Kim Rogers, Stephen Rogers, Stephen Romano, Paula Ronan, Phil Ronan, Paul Ronucadakis?
Ronucadakis.
Yes, thank you. Mary Ann Ronucadakis, Babe Rosantes, Nick Rosantes, Robert Rovano, Kevin Rudolph, Mary Rudsa, Alyssa Sacco, Todd Sacco, Trevor Sacco, Estha Fania, Saldoriet Raga, Diane Sands, Kenneth Sands, Alyssa Santoro, Sandra Scarfo, Tommy Schlitzling, Kathleen Suma, Robert P. Suma Junior, Amy Seville, Barbara Seville, Edward Seville, Eric Seville, Jason Seville, Luke Seville, Stephanie Seville, Locke, Tracy Seville, Edith Swenson, Peter Swenson, Dot Swenson, David Talent, Mark Talent, Sharon Talent, Gianna Tomas, Jen Taylor, Matt Tychmore, Tony Tychmore, Magalena Tizano, Phyllis Tedesco, Jack Traynor, Kelly Traynor, Richard Honan, Rachel Rego, and Todd Conley.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Dowd? Thank you, listener. President, Jack Dowd, Precinct One. Matt, what do you think of that? I think it was a dead heat between you.
We're not done, we're not done, but go ahead.
Oh, you're not done?
We're not done.
Sorry.
That's okay. You gotta let it run out anyway.
I'll go after. I've got enough of this.
Yes, sir. Will we get a printout of this after we've?
No, because you're... I think you're mistaken, so I think you're good.
No conversations, please. In between? Yes.
Kurt Malara, Precinct Two, I'm against 3A law as written, and I'm going to continue with names. Pauline Boyen, Rich Boyen, Dave Brazer, Kim Brazer, Robert Brew, Jr., Susan Briggs, William Briggs, Anthony Brania, Pat Brania, Virginia Brown, Christine Bruce, Richard Brugman, Andrew Brugman, Ashley Brugman, Judy Bono, Christian Bonafane, Kristen Bonafanes, Even Bonafane, Robert Burdette, Donna Burke, Danielle Butts, Louis Callow, Michael DeCarlo, Debbie DeCarlo, Gail DeCoste, Jack DeCoste, Maureen Delsolio, Susan Delante, Barbara Delio, John Del Solio, Frank Marco, Rob Marco, Rose Marco, Cheryl Mile, Francesca Dinuzio, Joyce DePippo, Susan DePippo, Maria DiGiovani, Bob Demento, Carla Demento, Fitzpatrick, Emily Demento, Gemma Demento, Margaret Demento, Phil Demento, Richard Demento, Nicholas DeCiscio, I believe, I'm sorry for the mispronunciation, Michael Fitzpatrick, Natalie Fitzpatrick, Shane Fitzpatrick, Susan Fitzpatrick, Karen Flary, Tom Flary, Leslie Florio, Matthew Florio, Dorian Floyd, Larry Floyd, Charlotte Flynn, Michael Flynn, Dennis Flod, Marilyn Flod, Amy Fabagil, Julie Fabagil, Catherine Flannier, Pauline Fraddy, Anthony Fusillo, Carolyn Fusillo, I believe there might be a junior in there, just two you can pick. Stephanie Hayes, Danny Herbert, Mackie Herbert, Michael Herbert, Peggy Herbert, Don Harris, Jacqueline Harris, Dan Hickey, Mike Hickey, Renee Hickey, Christina Higden, Diane Higden, Jill Higden, Brian Higden, David Higginbottom, Botham, Lee Karen Higginbotham, Joanne Hillman, Amy Honan Rodriguez, Mary Helen Honan, Donna Houghton, Jane Howard, Laura Howard, Robin Howard, Tom McKay, Jim Mackin, Rick McKenzie, Stacy McKenzie, Sheila Magnon, Mary Claire Mahoney, Shannon Mahoney, Steve Mahoney, Elaine Malios, Silvana Malios, Steve Malios, Facili Malios, Evangelou Menaloulis, if I said that right? Lisa Menaloulis, Alitza Menaloulis, Stacy Menaloulis, Skip Marcela, Christina Marengi, Louis Marley, Brandon Martin, Mary Martin, Michael Martin, George Martinez, Paula Martinez. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm coming over here and bring it on here. I'm going to use the second at this time.
We've got you covered over here.
Damn it!
Name a precinct.
Kim.
Name a precinct.
Diana Vian, Precinct Two, Kim McLaughlin, Mangino, Michelle McLaughlin, Susan McLaughlin, Tom McLaughlin, Danielle McLaughlin, John McLaughlin, Jack McNutty, Karen McNutty, Amy McTeeny, Barbara McTeeny, Kevin McTeeny, Mike McTeeny, Eric Metz, Kurt Malara, Frank Medalon, Emily Leon, Ally Montgomery, Emma Montgomery, Heidi Montgomery, Sean Montgomery, Tom Montgomery, Ernie Montmoran, Julie Morris, Patrick Morris, Colette Myallison, Brian Murphy, Colin Murphy, Robbie Murphy, Dennis Murphy, Gina Murray, James Murray, Joe Murray, Joe Murray, Michelle Murray, Larry Powers, James Prentiss, Mary Prentiss, Jennifer Price, Erin Pritzky, Nina Rego, Marie Randolph, Kenneth Randolph, Andrew Rapchuk, Marilyn Rapchuk, Dan Raymond, Danielle Reardon, Leslie Reardon, Paul Reardon, Michelle Riley, Taylor Riley, April Ray, Wilson Ray, Dave Reynolds, Kristen Reynolds, Lance Resnick, Rachel Resnick, Andrew Race, Shauna Richmond, Nate Richmond, Lenny Riley, Peggy Riley, Marissa Rivera, DJ Rohn, Peg Roberts, Kaia Rodriguez, Caitlin Rodriguez, Lou Sureski, Madeline Syracusea, Patricia Syracusea, William, thank you, William Skinner Junior, Alex Smith, Glenn Smith, Elizabeth Sarantino, Mark Sarantino, Diane Spicer, my girl, Danny Spinelli, Nick Spinalozza, Mary Spinale, Debbie Spinalozza, Frank Spitaleri, Frank R. Spitaleri, that was the day before, Ann Spitaleri, Bob Staff, Ellen Staff, David Stasio, Janice Stevens, Steve Stevens, Amy Streeter, Callaway Girl, Henry Streeter, Judy Sturdis, Ron Sturdis, Rudy Sullivan, Andrew Sullivan, Jordan Sullivan, John Sullivan, Mary Sullivan, Patty Sullivan, Ruthie Sullivan, Nicola Sulo, Julie Watson, Nancy Weiss, Pat, Patricia Wells, Amy Warstaff, Barbara Warstaff, Michelle, Michael Westcott, I got like ten more, Yvonne Westcott, Thomas Westcott, Thomas Westcott Junior, Dana White, Matthew White, Deborah Wilcox, Jennifer Withrow, Shirley Wright, Bob Wayne, Brendan Young, Mel Young, Valerie Young, Matt Zicella, Chris Sekos, Ben Zicella, thank you, Zicella, and Carol Zicella.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Bonafany, Precinct Five. I would just like to say that all the names you've read on those lists, many of those people voted for you. And we voted for you because we think and hope that you will listen to our constituents. So it's just a reminder that the reason why you're sitting before us is because we put our faith in you. So that's your job to do, is listen to us. Thank you.
Obviously, I'm voting no, but I wasn't on the list.
Oh, you weren't?
No.
Name a precinct for one.
Colleen Murphy, Precinct Two. I'm sitting here listening to all these names that people read, a lot of people I don't know, but a lot of people I do know, and this is across the board. These are real estate people, these are business people, these are town employees, these are teachers. Come on, guys, really, get it together. You gotta listen to us. So for those of you that have come out and said where you stand, but the rest of you that are waffling, it's time for you to make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. I was gonna try to lighten it up a little bit, Matt, but I think it was a nose-to-nose decision here. But now I'll just get back to a total brutality.
I love you, Jack.
Very sharp. I'm reading from the purpose of the floodplain overlay district. One of the lines, "Avoid the loss of utility services, which is if damage by flooding would disrupt or shut down the utility network and impact regions of the community beyond the side of the flood." I think I mentioned that just at the last meeting. I think they're all listening, but I'm not sure. They had this part. Another line, "Reduce damage to public and private associated with the response of cleanup of flooding." We're only two hundred miles, as a bird flies, from Hurricane Sandy in New York, and the damage that was done by Hurricane Sandy, not that far away, was up to, and counting, seventy billion dollars. So we really have to get involved with this flooding, seawalls, and I think we decided the committee to do just that. The seawall leaving Winthrop going to revere has deteriorated to the point where it's gonna cost us. And why I mention all those utilities under that road there, 145, I believe, is because exactly what they said in this report. If something happens to those utilities, we're gonna be in a locked bubble for a long One more sentence from the floodplain overlay district report. Ensure public safety through reducing the threats of life and personal injury. We saw pictures in Winthrop of people being carried out of their homes in different areas of the town, you know, from seventy-eight onwards, been here, living here a long time. And I remember the pictures, I remember the people. been here, living here a long time, and I remember the pictures, I remember the people. We really should take care of this problem that we have at Deer Island. Mass Water Resources raised the grade of their property 20 to 40 feet on the north side of Deer Island, including the concrete wall, the granite revetment, and they also raised the floodplain during a big push of the storm, you know, of course, I used to go from Shirley Gutt, but now, you know, we built that up, six, 10, 20, 40 feet, I don't know what it is, it's much higher, so when you displace water, it goes someplace else, that was a quick trip. The water goes someplace else, the same right at Arrow Beach, I hope somebody takes up this effort to get in touch with the Mass Water Resource and get those memorandas of agreement that we talked about in the previous meeting, and see what they're gonna do about it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes.
Oh, Carl Rockhouse, precinct six, I'm new to precinct six, I moved up very recently, but.
Welcome.
Um, as I'm just sitting here, I'm just listening to what people are saying, you know, we're talking about the budgets and things that have come up today, I think about, you know, the budgets have having to go up every single year because of things like healthcare costs and things like that, and, you know, cost of living in Winthrop, the cost of, so if you're to qualify for rental assistance in Winthrop right now, it's 8% AMI, that's the state law, AMI for Winthrop is around $90,000, so if you're a teacher in Winthrop, you qualify for housing assistance, if you're a cop in Winthrop, you qualify for housing assistance, we don't think about this in terms of, you know, I first grew up in Cambridge, in Cambridge, we don't think about, you know, housing assistance as anymore as, you know, people who are poor, we think of it as just people who work for the city now, and so, you know, when I think of like wanting to live here, wanting to live in Winthrop, I'm thinking about, you know, cost of living, and one of the things that, this is just sort of into a question in terms of forecasting, I'd actually like, would like to know, is, you know, forecasting what things in the budget may go up because the city might have to start helping with assistance such as housing assistance, or, and who are we sort of taking out of the city because of, you know, rising costs, right, will cops who work for Winthrop not be able to live in Winthrop because they might qualify for housing assistance already, or teachers, things like that, if we're talking about the school budget going up, is it possible they might not be able to live here, might have to commute far away, and so, yeah, I'm worried about that, of living, and, you know, I just, more people living here, I think 3A is a good, great way to increase, talking about not having enough tax base, 3A is a great way to increase tax base, so, just, yeah, thank you, and just in terms of question, question we think we look forward to, I know that people who are young like me have less, start using less cars and things like that, and a lot of the budget was from motor vehicle tax, I don't know versus, I have a motor vehicle, but just wondering, thinking about in the future, can Winthrop survive on budget without that much motor vehicle tax, because we might, people like me stop buying cars, so.
Thank you.
Julie Wallace, precinct two, I wasn't gonna speak tonight, but I really, I want to commend everyone up here on organizing, I do, please don't be facetious, I am being honest, okay?
Thank you.
And just because our names aren't on that list does not mean we're adversaries, does not mean we're your enemies, it does not mean we want to destroy Winthrop, and I'm talking to the people over here because I know that that is a common sentiment, the reason that we came together to form Winthrop Working Together is because we want to be partners, and in fact, I hope that all the people on that list, a really impressive number of people, and I see your sign, and it's really diminishing, it's hard to see, and I wish it wasn't like this between all of us, but I hope that all the people come to the meetings, I hope they take part in the process, it's an incredible amount of engagement, you, our councilors, I want you to know that we support you in continuing the process, in learning about the issues, in engaging, in having the information before us to make a good decision about what is the right outcome, and I'm unclear about this ask to vote now, because I'm not sure what we'd be voting on, but maybe I'm missing something, I'm hoping that there's a proposal, that we can see what is the zoning plan, you know, what has the state said, I know that we've been working with the secretary, he said that we're on a good path, what's he gonna come back to us with, are we going to change our requirements, is this something flexible that we can adjust to make this work for Winthrop, so that we are a partner both to ourselves, to each other, and to the state, and to the region that we're a part of, so I just wanna say that the reason we formed Winthrop Working Together is because we want to do exactly that, we don't want to vilify one another, we don't want us versus them, yes versus no, right versus wrong, there's nuance, and there's opportunity to learn, and we're together, because these issues aren't gonna go away with 3A, we get rid of 3A, we don't get rid of the housing crisis, right, we might lose a ton of money that we need, how are we gonna solve for that, I wish it wasn't the case, but that's the case of this law, so I want us to be real with each other about what we're facing, and the issues, and the escalating cost of living across the board, and zoning is one piece of the pie, we need funding, we need the state to come up with other mechanisms to help preserve affordability, to produce housing people need in places where they need it, that's not Winthrop, we're not gonna absorb all of that, we're crazy to think that we should ever do that, and I'm sorry if people assume that that's the case, but we should work together, we want to do that, and I hope that's the spirit that we can help to infuse into these meetings, and I hope that that makes sense, thank you.
Thank you.
Cassie Woodhouse, precinct six, I wanna second everything Julia said, and also thank you as the town councilors, this is my first time living in a small town where I can actually be a part of the process and see what you all have to endure as you're doing these big decision-making conversations, and it is a lot, and so I just wanted to thank you all for being present, and, yes, you're forced to participate because you're here, but you chose to run, and you chose to be a part of this process in a major way, and every major town decision, and so I thank you all for that.
Just a quick one as I can, Kurt Malore, precinct two, this one's about the budget, here in the budget, and looking at chapter 70 money for the schools, over the past few years, we've gone up $2 million that they've given us, and what it looks like is in the budget, some lines have shifted from the town over to the school, I might be wrong, but it seems like some of those did, the money going to the school went down to a 60-40 split, where in past years, it actually made higher, oh, that was.
No, that can't be right.
It was actually a higher amount that actually benefited the school a little bit more, so I think if we're gonna start pushing for two and a half, and, you know, pull on the hearts of everybody and say, oh, it's for the kids, before we do that, maybe have a plan laid out as to why the money got changed, because they did look at the chapter 70 money, it is $2 million over the past three fiscal years, if we could break it down as to why the money changed, so people understand the budget a little bit clearer, because even me going through it, I deal with my own budgets at work, it's still not 100% clear for, you know, the average person in town to really understand how it broke down, and that the 60-40 split is less money going to the school now, so maybe if there's some explanation as to why, and that may, you know, alter people's minds on two and a half.
Thank you, I will say that the base budget document change last year, it was 48% that went to the schools before that, the money when it started last year was $9,500,000 and change, which accounted for those new items, and that was dollar to dollar given, they have received the increase in chapter 70 money, and we're doing anything we can to help the schools, and I'm sure you'll hear much more about it over the next couple of months, any other public, yes?
Celeste Verri, precinct one, just to kind of jump back on the 3A issue, I did hear all the names, and I also sat here through a very lengthy budget description, and multiple instances where we're gonna be hitting shortfalls, and where we're forecasting in the future we'll have even less money, less opportunity, more expenses, I'm really interested in the work that Winthrop Together is proposing, I hope that it is an organization that will bring everybody together, I still encourage you guys to put together a community advisory council, to ardently come together and work together, not just tell one side and lock up the door when other folks are talking, you know, and also to understand really the steps that have been taken, right, there are other towns that are fighting in court about the constitutionality, have we assessed that, have we assessed whether or not the state is overreaching in legal terms, and have we, I know we've had a couple of different meetings with the secretary, have we proposed an alternative methodology, clearly, out of the 330-something municipalities in the city, we can't apply one single overlay, and as we talk about environmental impacts, flood zones, ever-approaching impacts, there definitely needs to be an opportunity to really, you know, show a true picture of what Winthrop is dealing with, and how this could effectively be implemented into counter-proposed that, I think the only way that we could do that, though, is if we have a community advisory council of people with diverse outlooks, and, you know, I'll come back and echo how people have said, yes, all those people on those lists, people in this room, people on Zoom, and people that are just too busy with their nose to the grindstone taking care of their family, put you all here to represent us, but you're also here to protect us, and you're also looking out for our interests, and everybody else is doing what they're doing, so I commend you all on that, and I, you know, I'm here to support you folks, to get engaged in the process, and I hope that everybody else with feedback and input has our desire to do the same, to come to the best decision for Winthrop.
Thanks, Celeste.
So, now, this precinct one, just to follow up, Mr. DeRossen made a proclamation back in January, I believe, as far as identifying certain cultures, ethnicities, backgrounds, and making the town aware of it, I'm not quite sure what platform that was supposed to be used for, I was under the impression that the CDICR would be doing that, I had been following the page, and I'm not sure who runs the Facebook page, but there was nothing there for April or May, I believe it was Jewish Heritage Month was May, Asian Pacific American, like, there were several things that were missed, and so, this is, I guess this goes back to the conversations we had, that if we're not gonna be consistent with this, and we're not gonna follow what the proclamations were made for, and I actually was under the impression that flags would also be raised, and they weren't, and so now we're gonna have proclamations that are raised for specific flags, and then we're gonna forget about other flags, I mean, and this is exactly what was described to you all when you voted on a flag policy, this is actually causing, in my opinion, it's causing more division, because you're forgetting certain ones, or you're doing others, there's no consistency with it, I was very disappointed, because I come out saying I'd like to see something for Greek Heritage Month, and all that was put up on the CDICR post was just a link, not even a description, and it was a fantastic link, because we have a gentleman, a poet here in Winthrop, who related Winthrop to his village in Greece, and it was remarkable if you read it, however, the consistency of this has failed, and there's been no oversight, and I'm sorry, but this, if you, this goes back to my 3A, if you feel like 3A is not a great law, you shouldn't be voting for it, this goes back to if you agree or disagree with a flag policy, then if you disagree, you shouldn't be voting no, and it has nothing to do with what's coming next month, the month after, the month after that, but you guys have failed, you've missed two months, and this is the exact reason why, this should never have been brought forward.
All right, so this is public comment, it's not a back and forth, but you did mention a specific councillor, so I do wanna respond to that, councillor DeRossen did propose a proposal, which included flags at the beginning of the year, and he was very inclusive with it, I did not wish for that to be part of the agenda, and councillor DeRossen changed it, and he went to just announcing certain months, all right, and we were doing, I think he was doing that mostly at end of meetings, and at the beginning of this year, or maybe even the beginning of last year, I had a public rela, I got cut off, I'm sorry. At the beginning of last year, I had a public relations opportunity for councillors, but I felt personally it was getting a little out of control, so it's not part of the council rules, and I think councillor DeRossen, to his credit, was using that opportunity, maybe we find a different opportunity for him to be able to continue to do that, because I think it was, the way he did it, I think was very well done, and to your point, like, we missed a couple of months, and you know what, I'll take responsibility for that, because I took that piece out of the thing, maybe there's, and maybe where we have the CDICR update, maybe that's an opportunity to announce what is going on during that month, so I appreciate the comments, you know, we don't get into a back and forth, and I'm sure you didn't.
Councillor DeRossen, you would make the proclamation, so.
You can make it towards me for that, thank you, all right, let's go on, we'll have another round, we have more, correspondence, Denise.
Yeah, we got an email from Kathleen Capuccio about grant numbers, Cheryl Howard opposing 3A, request department head meeting reference to it, Carol Meach, she would like to see updates to the agenda on the intergovernmental strategies and educate the community more, Lisa Plotnik requests a proclamation for antisemitism, requests a proclamation for Pride Month to be passed, Suzanne Leonard, Randy Barnby, Nate Lacy, Kelly Gall, and Julie Wallace.
Thank you. Committee reports, joint committee, intergovernmental strategies, finance, councillor Tassinier.
Joint Committee of Intergovernmental Affairs and Finance met, the finance subcommittee, to be very clear, that's just the councillors who are on the finance subcommittee, not involving the rest of the commission, or the citizens advisory committee, met earlier tonight, we came up with basically four, four big takeaways, which first and foremost is to invite former chief Paul Leonard to the next meeting, he's a current member of the MDRV board, and if he's willing and able to participate, we'd like him to come and present where he believes the MDRV board stands on renegotiations, again, that's if he's willing and if he's able, under the, you know, conflict of interest law between being a board member and being a citizen of the town, what he can and cannot share, secondly, we defined some working groups to gather information on the current agreements, which, most of which are available on the town's website, but we have a few that are out there in cyberspace that need to be tracked down, other impacts on health and environment and infrastructure, based on the current agreement, and what's currently taking place between Mass Port and Deer Island, thirdly, it is to define what kinds of subject matter experts the town will need to advise on negotiations, and to shape what the town's goals will be in the negotiations, up to and including possible consultants who can actually handle such negotiations, who may have had recent experience or recent successes, and then lastly, is the next meeting we set for 6/18, Tuesday at 6:00 PM, for that joint committee, which we may, depending on what gets referred to finance tonight, we might have to, might have to reschedule that.
Thank you, school department report, school committee met last evening, three major topics, I guess, I took out of the meeting, one was graduation, I was able to attend, it's an incredible event, first time in several years, weather was not an issue, it was 140-odd kids graduating, it was an incredible ceremony, you know, it's amazing, when we talk about so many things, and then we take for granted sometimes some things, but then you go to a celebration like that, and it was just done so well, and I commend all the graduates and their families, the other amazing thing about that, there was, I believe, over $500,000 given away in grants and awards, so many, you know, awards between 500 and 1,000, and then many from 1,000, to 2,500 to 5,000, and 10,000, and then there has been the Facella scholarships, which is now in the 11th year, and the Facella family was just an incredible family that lived and went through a very nondescript, and when they passed, they left $7 million to the schools, which is invested, and the, basically, the earnings from that every year gets given out to the children, and there were scholarships ranging from 10, $10,000 scholarships to one $30,000 scholarship, and it affects a multiple of people and families, and it's just fantastic, also, Mr. Ead, who had come to many of our meetings over the past, an incredible citizen of the town, he passed this year, and his family awarded a $25,000 scholarship, and then the Ramandi family, which is another older Winthrop family. a $25,000 scholarship. And then the Ramandi family, which is another older Winthrop family, they came and they started a scholarship this year where they gave five $25,000 scholarships. So it was incredible for the students, for the families, just to hear the stories. It was great. The second item, which involved a Winthrop graduate, actually, Nick Cappuccio, who won three individual state medals, state championships at state meets this year. And that's--
[applause]
I believe it's the 100th, the 200th in the long jump. It's an incredible feat. It is the first time in Winthrop athletics history that is multiple state individual champion, which is just incredible. It makes just not only a scholar, but an incredible athlete in multiple sports. And I congratulate him on his accomplishments, and that was brought out at last night's school committee meeting. So congratulations to the Cappuccio family, and Nick especially. And the last thing that was brought about, obviously, was the budget. And, you know, looking towards fiscal '26, as Matt described very well, there is a deficiency of, there was a deficiency from level service of 1.7 million and change. I made a proposal to the town manager to add, to take 220 from the remaining three cash, which is now part of the budget, to help bring that deficiency down to 1.5. It's still 1.5 million, but, you know, the superintendent is doing everything in her power to look at the budget, and hopefully, you know, she's going to be able to prepay some expenses for next year. And also, there are some outside accounts that will probably be brought down to zero to help reduce that deficit, and hopefully somehow, some way, get through the fiscal '25 year without much of a change. But as Matt said, and I 100% agree, there is a major structural deficiency coming in '26, which is going to have huge ramifications. And the school committee is well aware of that, obviously. And I'm sure they talked about, as Matt talked about, and the Finance Commission talked about, the question of an override. And I'm sure it will be discussed at the next couple of school committee meetings. The process would be that school committee would discuss it. They would go through their subcommittees, go back to the full committee, discuss that, come up with what they think is the right proposal. They would submit that request to the town council, and the town council would vote whether to put it on. The town council would not make amendments to it, would not change it. It would make a motion to approve it and to go onto the ballot or to not approve it or onto the ballot. But I'm sure you'll be hearing more about that in the coming meetings in the not-too-distant future. So it was a much shorter meeting than this, but it was well-packed with a lot of good information. And again, congratulations to the graduates. It was just a great ceremony. Let's go to town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Just an update. We did receive a community compact grant for municipal fiber. So special thanks to Barbara Pucci and Detective Wayne Carter who put that application in. $237,481. To continue our work on the fiber program around town, connect all the municipal buildings with fiber, and also update and replace some outdated switches that we have. So we're happy to get that, thankful to the state for that. We have, whereas everyone has seen, we've got work started on the tip project on Revere Street. We do keep the updates, the two-week look aheads up on the, not only in the town manager blog, but on the website. I am meeting this Saturday out at the Point Shirley Association. They've already had their own meeting, but we're going to follow up with our, one of our environmental scientists, myself, the Chair of Conservation, and a few other people, to give an update on where we stand with DEP, beach, the beach management plan, beach cleanup, and getting rid of the seaweed's a big concern with the plovers, et cetera, et cetera. So we'll give an update on all those issues, and certainly take input from the residents at the same time. And then CZM grant update. They have not released the RFR yet. Once they do that, we have a six-week window to apply. We're working on an application for a vulnerability plan, which will update ours that has since expired. CZM gave us money before to do that. Now we need to update the vulnerability plan with increases in, you know, sea level rise, et cetera, et cetera. But, you know, to update, you know, the impacts on Winthrop and how that's going to, you know, look down the road. And we're also going to put in a separate application for stormwater design monies. As we know, we're still waiting in committee with the federal monies, so we want to kind of hedge our bets and maybe put an application in for some stormwater monies for the, you know, Pico, Tileson, and Girdlestone neighborhoods, so we can speed up that process. And the council president brought it up, but we didn't really get much traction on it. I'll take my blame for that. But we may want to talk about updating the July meeting dates. July 2nd, which would be the first, Tuesday, is sort of a off week for a lot of people with the 4th being on Thursday. So that, when, that's kind of a longer month with five weeks. So maybe we meet on the 9th and the 23rd, just something to kick around. So, and that's it. I'll certainly open to questions.
I, I know I've talked to you about this, but I love dogs. I just want to make sure the grass that I step on is not left by the dogs that I've been walking on. So I, and I know we're working on that, and I know we've cleaned up, I know they cleaned up a park near me, and they did a great job on that. They were great today. But there are lots of dogs on the beach. I take pictures of them all the time, they're on leashes. I don't know if, I'm hoping this doesn't require a fine. I'm hoping dog owners that love other dog owners can really help each other, say, hey, let's get this, let's keep this place cleaned up. We don't need the DPW doing that. We need, we've got so many other things to do. So it's a passion, passionately, all of you watching, please try to help us.
Thank you. Counselor Demarcus.
I want to focus on four things, and I think these are the four biggest things that are affecting Winthrop. I think these are the biggest issues. The middle school site, the budget for the school, public safety building, and 3A. Okay? And I'll start, I'll start with the middle school site, because we've been told that there was a proposal. I've seen a proposal. I was wondering when we're going to see an actual presentation.
Waiting for, as far as the presentation goes, we're waiting for Ed Sports to get back to us. We do have also an update. You know, we're looking at one of your other points, which was public safety. We're, you know, going to make, we've been, that will be coming up under fire station updates. So, you know, we have to see what the community feels is the right thing to do. But there will be much more talk about that shortly.
Okay. All right. Because I, I think they're both, I think they're both incredibly important to the town. I think everybody's wondering what's going on with the middle school. It's been empty for so long. We need to do something with that building. We're losing money every day on that building. You know, as far as, you know, a debt exclusion and a Prop 2.5 override, I can tell you right now, as somebody who's gone through financial struggle in the last year, if there was a vote to come up to put more money towards the schools, I would do it in a minute as a member of this council. But as somebody who's a homeowner and has two kids in the school system, I think I'm the only one on the council right now with two kids in the school system, I, I can't afford it. I can't afford, I can't afford, I mean, with the way inflation is right now, with everything, we need to live within our means. And we need to take a look at other alternatives to live within our means, because frankly, I can't afford it. And I think a lot of people feel the same way I do. And I would hate to throw all our eggs into one basket and say, okay, we're going to get Prop 2.5 override for this. We're going to do a debt exclusion for this, and have it all be voted down. Because then where are we? You know? And then finally, on 3A, I think, I think the community has spoken, you know? And if the town council president would let me, I would make a motion to vote no on 3A right now from the floor. Okay? So can I have a motion to vote no on 3A right now?
The planning board is going to be coming back to us. We've asked them to expedite it. We're hoping to hear back from them by the end of July. They've put a lot of time and effort into this. We're going to let them come back to us. Ultimately, you know, the council will have a say, and potentially ultimately, the citizens will have the final say.
Thank you, President.
Counselor Tassinier.
Ms. Mayor, thank you for your report. We've heard a lot tonight about a 2.5 override, debt exclusion for the firehouse, public safety stuff. What are the other things that are lined up in that capital plan that may actually require a debt exclusion going forward? I know there's a couple of stormwater projects that Council Muston was looking for an update on tonight. There's, Council Demarcus said it, at a certain point, we've reached a limit as to what we can ask for. And we still have a lot of work to do around this town to secure our infrastructure, to be resilient against the tide and the climate. And it's not, we're going to be asking a lot. So in a future meeting, you can maybe give us a list of some of the things that may be coming up on a later 2.5 override, or more likely debt exclusions for capital projects. That'd be really helpful and be something that we should educate the council on, but also educate everyone in the community on, because these are going to be things they're going to have to decide on when those votes come up. And to have it, I guess, in a summary form to know, you know, in two more years, we're going to need maybe money for the seawall that Mr. Dow keeps highlighting. We should, we should know that. We should be more transparent about that with all our, all our neighbors.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just comment quickly. A lot of that is in the capital plan, you know, the Tileson, Girdlestones, stormwater projects. The seawall, I believe that Mr. Dow is referring to, is on Revere, owned by DCR. As you know, used to, you know, you know DCR's budget. I've called the Director Arigo to try to get an update on that, you know. So, I mean, we're trying to find out where that stands, so we can find out where the repairs are going to be coming to that. We certainly have money in our capital plan to fix our own seawalls down by the landing. And we've got other work to do. I mean, we talked about it, and, you know, we tried to get some Google shots. We replaced the stairs, some of the connection stairs, other infrastructure stuff we're doing. So, yeah, there's going to be decisions. And like I said, when we were talking about the flooding, you know, months ago with Pico, and, I mean, we have to get grant money. We've got to try to, this federal money available, the state money, I mean, it's just not going to be able to all fall on the Winthrop residents. So we're vigilant on that. We're constantly looking, you know, for, just talking about the middle school site. We've got a, you know, we move forward, and Congresswoman Clark's budget to 1.5 million to try to demo the school, you know, that kind of stuff. So we're working hard on that and trying to get those things funded. So there's never going to be enough money, but we're working hard to try to get outside of, you know, the residents' money as well, so.
You're doing a great job hunting that money down and bringing it home. So we appreciate that.
Yeah, team effort. We're all doing it.
And I think that our directors for our town, if I was doing a great job trying to live within our means, it's just, it takes a lot more money today than it did even in 2020 to live at level service, which we really want to be at that needs base, so that foundational base budget, especially when it comes to schools, but also when it comes to being able to get down that street during a high tide.
Right. Absolutely. Thank you.
Vice President.
Thank you. I just wanted to touch on the Euro Beach update. Thank you for hosting that meeting on Saturday. That'll be good. But just for anybody who may not be able to go, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. There's no desire to turn all of your homes into a bread sanctuary.
No.
It just needed said out loud in the meeting. One question I've gotten a few times is, will this be recorded for people to watch later? I know we probably can't do Zoom in there, but I didn't know if you talked to CAT.
I haven't. I will, though. That's a good idea. Yeah, we can, yeah, we can have Mike. Michael, he's done at other events. He can show up or, you know, get supplies with a camera. So that's probably something we can do. And then he can take and upload the footage onto CAT at a later date.
That would be great. And then the primary question I've been asked almost every time I exit my home is, like, how did we get here? So like, I think people just, you don't have to answer now, but just within the presentation, it is a, it's a problem. The beach is rocky. If anybody's seen it, it's not sandy. It's not pleasant. But the plover areas are the same place they have been. But the seaweed is a real concern, and I think people are very justified in their concerns about that.
And I'll give a little preview of what we'll talk about Saturday. But we've reached out, even though we're still negotiating the beach management plan. I mean, sort of like, you know, when you're on a golf course, right? 90-degree rule, just kind of go straight out, straight back, and bring a front-end loader out there, because we can't bag seaweed. It's too heavy. Like, it just, it's not feasible. You know, you're going to get two or three pieces in a bag. It just doesn't work. So we need that bucket, the front-end loader, so if we can sort of drive straight out, load the seaweed, drive back, you know, we're trying to work with DEP to get a plan in place, so on an interim basis that we can do that. I haven't finalized that with them yet, but hopefully I will by Saturday, so.
Thank you. And then just one more clarifying thing. I know it's come up for a few residents, like, things that are naturally occurring on the beach can't be removed from the beach. Can you just clarify what that rule is? Like, you can't take rocks and things off the beach? Or moving sand?
We can't, yeah, we can't rake it. We can't, like we used to do. We go out with the rake and pull everything back. And we can't do that anymore, because you get down into the, you know, the flood plain. And things we've been doing for years have been, you know, in violation of the Wildlife Protection Act for years. We finally just kind of caught up with us, right? So, I mean, that was when I first walked through the door, we got that letter, and, you know, we had to start dealing with it. Even the mound that we were creating for years, you know, while we thought we were protecting the road, you know, and we'll explain that at the meeting, and the Conservation Commission Chair walked out there with a member from DEP, showed how we were actually, you know, maybe making it a little worse with the flooding and stuff like that. So we want to come up with a plan that works, that we can not only protect the beach, be able to maintain the beach, but also give us some flood protection as well. So that's, that's part of that plan.
And just to tie it all back into budget, is this costing us additional money? I know we needed to engage an engineer.
It was $37,000 ballpark for the engineer to come up with the beach management plan. That was funded in this year's budget. We, you know, we have an engineering light item in the DPW and some other monies. We had a little bit of ARPA money for that. So we did take care of the funding in this year's budget, but, you know, moving forward, it's going to be the costs, you know, when you create those maybe small dunes that, instead of the big mound, you know, that'll have to be a certain type of sand, right? And we don't deal with it here, but, you know, in the rural areas, they call it Title V sand, and it's used for septic systems that are in the ground, you know, when you have it on your own personal property. And that sand can be expensive, and you have to use that to do that. So part of it is I'm trying to get a phase plan, so we can do it over time, so it's not a big hit all at once. So that's all going to be part of it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Counselor DeRozan.
Very quickly, with all the discussion on climate, I know that there's been a little bit of a confusion about people who are interested in joining the new Citizens Advisory Committee on climate. It does require an application, and we do have an application that's on the website. It's a rather generic application. At the very top of it, you need to indicate which commission or board you are actually applying to. So if you are interested, I know I've had five different people approach me with an interest. And so I was just talking to Denise and Tony, and the application is on the website. Do we know exactly where on the town website? Can you remember where people look?
Under the town clerks.
Under the town clerks?
Community applications, yeah.
Okay.
Community applications.
Under the town clerk. So please go there, fill it out. I know, I was talking to the council president earlier. We're wanting to get that commission appointed. The council president will do that as soon as possible. Part of that process is to review the applications that come in. So please do apply as soon as possible. I also asked Denise if she wouldn't mind just emailing it out to all of us on the council, so you can also approach one of us. If you're interested in applying, we'll send you the application. But please do so in the coming week or so if you're interested. And then we'll take a look at that, and we'll get that commission going as soon as possible.
Thank you. Counselor Muston.
Thank you, Council President. And thank you, Tony. I think Matt kind of summed it up well. You managed to pull off with your team a great budget that's covered a lot of the hot, a lot of, a lot of the places that were short-funded, and you've managed to do a great job. I, speaking of budget, though, I wanted to ask you, I think Mr. Aiolo, Councilor Aiolo, had asked in the past if there was any money that we could, if there was an estimate to keep the engineers designing the water management in the Pico and the Girdlestone areas. Has, have those numbers come in?
We, they've drilled down on the total cost of what it's going to cost, but they haven't been able to break it out. We haven't dug in, Steve and I, yet with them to break out exactly what that chunk will be. I hope to have it by the next meeting, maybe even next week. Maybe we can throw it on as a gender item. But we don't have it quite yet. So Wood and Curran did come back, you know, based on what the site survey they did, what they estimate the, based on that site survey, what they estimate the total cost will be slightly lower than what we thought, which is good news, I guess. But, you know, still a $400,000, $500,000 number. So now we want to break it out, and, you know, can we do 100,000? Can we do 60? And we haven't got there yet with them.
Okay.
But we will.
I was hoping maybe you could say a few words. It feels as though there are times where, like, there are daunting amounts of challenges that this town faces. But it seems like you handle things well with, in a graceful fashion, because you just kind of pragmatically just go through it. And so if you could just speak to, like, all the stuff that we're facing long-term, I mean, it's funny how when, for effect, the capital asset, capital plan decided to put forth all the things that we need as a town in one lump sum, all the roads don't need to get fixed at once. So that number is kind of false, in a sense, because it's like, as a homeowner, I don't need all of my things repaired all at once. So it's a little less daunting when you start to break it down per year. And, but can you speak to, like, your experiences as a town manager, and how we, as a town, will succeed through these budget challenges, both in the school and with climate resiliency, even with some of the, and you can even touch on the 3A being that, 3A is obviously a big, scary no-no for most of us. And that incredible list that you guys read, where six people read for three minutes, that must be what, like, are we talking over 1,500 names? That must be what, like, are we talking over 1,500 names?
Yes, oh, thousand.
Thousand. So, but that number is a relevant, reflective of the people that are scared of what is already overdevelopment. And we're already stretched thin with, as you can see with the school being 2.8 million short in 2026, we're already faced with ma, major challenges. So even before 3A were to be accepted, how do you feel about like the chances of overcoming these challenges and, um, based on experience?
Well, that wasn't, yeah, yeah. Um, I would say you're, no, you've got a good strategic plan in place. The council's working hard on it. I mean, ultimately it's going to be the community that decides. I mean, there won't be, like you said, there's $200 million. I mean, grant money will cover some of it, but you won't get it all. So you'll have to space that out and decisions will have to be made. You know, you'll have to, some things will happen sooner than you think, like there'll be unexpected expenses that'll pop up, whether it's a rooftop heating unit or a boiler or something like that. Um, but, you know, you've got a good plan in place. You've got good resources. You're, you know, you're, you've got some positive things going. You've got strong reserve funds. You know, your pension liability is just about paid. You know, you've got some other things coming on board. I mean, there's, there's a lot of good things here, but you know, they're not wrong. I mean, every community I've worked in, every five to seven years, there's, you know, you talk about an override for the schools. I mean, it's just, you know, everyone talks about inflation and their own budgets and things like that and I'm feeling it, everybody's feeling it, food costs, whatnot. I mean, it's, but that's happening on the town side too. All of our expenses are going up. It's the same. So, you know, and the reason companies are charging more is because it's the cost of more. So it's, you know, some of it will have to be that, but, you know, you got to manage it and there is a limit. The community can only handle so much and we'll have to manage that and, you know, and that's decisions the community will make. You know, you, you, you cut back on services and there's a big demand for services, but if you can't afford them, then you have to scale them back.
It seems like cities like Cambridge that have gone through that growth where the affluent are managed to able to stay in place, but then the people that are actually working their normal jobs are, can't afford it. So we have to kind of offset it. So it's, you know, it's some, somewhere along the lines, we have to, you know, make some big decisions and it seems like there's no way of getting around the, uh, the, the 2.5 percent, you know, proposition override make us have to do, you know, overrides at some point.
Well, yeah, and it wasn't meant to always be two and a half. It was meant to put the decision back with the, you know, with, you know, with the residents. It was meant to, the intent was is if you need more than two and a half, so the government can't just in, you know, haphazardly raise taxes, it was, you know, meant to put it back in the ballot and, and, you know, when the residents hand through the ballot vote and to let them decide what they want for their town.
Appreciate it.
And that's what we'll do.
Keep up the good work. Thank you so much.
Well.
I feel pretty confident that there's never, ever going to be a time where we say, we have nothing to do. We have no one.
That's not been my experience in any town.
When you have, you know, inflation over two and a half, it makes it that much more difficult. Um, I, I also want to say over the past year or maybe last year, we started talking about private ways, public ways and all that stuff and we identified a bunch of them and we identified one as the number one goal, at least for that time and to start the process. And, um, if anybody's taken a walk to the stairs leading from, um, not from Walden, Herman Street down to Walden.
Herman to Walden, yeah.
Ending at Short Street. It's, uh, they did an incredible job, so thanks to DPW and their work. It's still going on, but the stairs have been redone, the railings are in, waiting for some lighting, I believe. But, um, you know, that's, that's showing things getting done. Nothing in municipal government gets done quickly. Um, but this was a start. It was a fantastic project. It was well needed, especially with changing of the bus routes and, and I applaud Steve and the guys for, um, for doing that because it came out fantastic. And hopefully, if you could just say, the lights, there's, there's some lighting coming in also?
It is, uh, we got, um, four solar powered light fixtures for that walkway. We also have a 30-foot solar powered, uh, light fixture for Beacon Circle coming. Uh, that light was blown down, uh, during one of the heavy windstorms earlier in the year. So it'll be in, uh, hopefully within the next month or two.
Well, thank you. Thank you for all you do. All right. Um, CDICR.
Um, they met. Um, I wasn't able to attend that meeting, but, uh, we do have a member here.
John did tell us about tomorrow night's event.
I know we did a, um, we did, they did a cleanup. Um, I think it was a beach cleanup last weekend or is that, yeah, they, yeah, so they did a beach cleanup, um, uh, over at.
They did a Coughlin Park cleanup.
Coughlin Park, that's what I thought, yeah. Yeah, last Saturday. Thank you. And I know thanks to DPW went around and grabbed the bags after the fact. They also did a great job landscaping. Uh, they got a bunch of residents together, the, uh, Ramona Cooper and David Green bench, um, over there by what used to be Expert Auto. Uh, they did a great job cleaning that up and putting, planting some flowers. That looks beautiful. Obviously we got the, um, we've been advertising that. We got the Pride Potluck coming up on June 15th, uh, which will be an all-day event, 12 to 5. Um, so that's coming up and then, you know, other things as well. But there was, uh, they're still working on some other future plans and the dates, but, um, that was the kind of the summary of that meeting.
All right.
Counsel President.
And yes.
Just briefly, um, uh, wanted to comment on the CDICR. If you haven't had a chance to attend CDICR meetings and Visili, I know you, you brought up the CDICR earlier. Um, I've attended, uh, I think everyone but one of their meetings this year so far. They meet on the third Wednesday of every month and I think the comment that Visili made earlier was, was quite right. Um, the intent of the, the History and Heritage Month Proclamations, and I appreciate Council President's kind words about the intent and what we tried to do, getting it off the ground, which was to celebrate a wide variety of the cultural communities in the town, including the Greek community. I still have your Greek-American Heritage Month flag for you, Visili. I, I need to give it to you. Um, but, but, um, we've, I'll, I'll just speak for that CDICR briefly and say that they're really looking for help. Um, I know when I was involved in efforts like this in Melrose, we had a similar commission and it, it was comprised of five or six people. There's no way that any group of five or six people can pull off everything because they've all got busy days as well, but they're looking for help to organize events. So, uh, as we have the events in June with, with Pride and Juneteenth and then the rest of the calendar, as you mentioned, love to see that calendar come to life. I mean, you can do a proclamation, but it sits on a piece of paper if we don't collectively bring it to life. So really, truly, there's so much talent in this room, in this community, amongst all of those diverse communities, and I would still love to see us celebrate all of those communities that remain on the calendar. I almost kind of think of it as, you know, let's get out the gate as best we can and then maybe we can hit 2025 running and really have a full year. Um, but they're a great group. They're dedicated. I think the couple of months that we went through where we, there weren't a lot of activity for the kind of April, May History and Heritage Months, that group went through a time where they didn't even have enough members to meet and you have to have a quorum to meet. So they had some people come on, come off, but that's a great group, um, very dedicated and hopefully that the consistency of the membership will be there so that the events can be consistent. So please, everybody get involved. I've seen the talent of everybody in this community. You can pull off awesome events. They're, they're looking for your help, so please jump in. Thank you.
All right. And, uh, policymaking committees, I don't believe.
Maybe.
Okay. And old business, we have the elementary school potential roof and solar project review for government for banks and the A T C. Uh, that is still in finance and hopefully that will come back to us at our next meetings. Um, so we look forward to that. Uh, Counsel DeRozan.
Uh, I have the proclamation for Pride Month. Um, Council President, do I need to read it one more time or do we?
Make a motion to waive the reading.
Second. I appreciate Counsel's reading it at the prior meeting. Uh, there's a proclamation on the table right now from, uh, Counsel DeRozan to raise the Pride flag from, um, tonight, basically through the 17th of June, consistent with the town policy. Any further discussion on the proclamation? Seeing then, uh, roll call vote, please.
Counsel Tassinieri.
Yes.
Counsel Costigan.
Yes.
Counsel Muntzer.
Yes.
Counsel DiMarco.
Yes.
Counsel Ayello. Counsel Swob.
Yes.
Counsel DeRozan.
Yes.
Vice President Belcher.
Yes.
President Luteri.
Yes. Motion passed. Thank you. Fire station update, we, you know, this meeting's gone a little long tonight, so, um, I'll, I'll give a brief summary and then we're going to put this on the next agenda to continue it. But we have been talking with, um, our, our engineers and architects and, um, are going to make, uh, three recommendations, basically talk about three potential projects. Um, we'll have much more information probably at the next meeting because it deserves a little more attention than I think people are willing to give it right now at quarter of 10. So this will stay on the agenda, but it will be discussed at the next council meeting, uh, in a little more earnest. Uh, new business, I'm going to skip around a little bit here, but there's a, a motion to change, well, I'm making a motion, I guess, so I'll pass this to Vice President Belcher for a second, but I'm making a motion to change the time of the council meetings from 7:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Um, well, I'm going to make that motion.
Uh, there's a motion on the cable from President Luteri. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Um, open for discussion.
Open for discussion.
So, you know, almost every other board in town meets at 6 o'clock. The timing, I mean, this is a good night, I guess, to bring up this motion since it's quarter of 10 now. I mean, it would have been quarter of 9. But, um, you know, the detriment of having a meeting at 6 is in, in the recent past, a lot of subcommittee meetings have met prior to the council meetings and that makes it tough for people getting out of work, trying to make a meeting at 5:00 or 5:30. Um, in years past, the subcommittee meetings were always made on a, on another night, whether it be a Monday, Wednesday, Thursday night, and it gives the subcommittee the time and the due diligence to do the work it's supposed to do and to have, give it the time instead of trying to rush through a meeting to make a council meeting. So, um, you know, I'm not going to talk about everybody's age, but the age in the council is getting up there to the point where, but honestly, I mean, these meetings shouldn't be much longer than not, not Vice President is much.
Decades younger. I believe. Give it that three-minute time.
Yeah. But basically, I think this is something that it just, it's the right thing to do. It's, it's basically comes in parallel with what everybody else is doing, including the school committee and such. Um, you know, I think it's long overdue. I think we should also look at putting a time limit on meetings so they can be more productive. Um, this one has been extremely productive. We just had a lot on the agenda, but anyway, so that's my pitch.
Anyone else for discussion on this? I, I will discuss.
Yeah.
Um, I think, I understand what you're saying and I, and I do agree, this is awfully late to be out of a meeting, but personally, so I work nine to five, some days I'm remote, some I'm not. Days I'm in the office and I work till 5, getting back here by 6 is next to impossible. I can move things around once in a while to make an exception and I think a lot of us have experienced a little more flexibility in, in work, which is great, but I know we have a, a fairly consistent problem of keeping people involved and getting people involved. And my fear would be that this would be another barrier for people who work maybe outside of the town or have different work arrangements. Also for anybody who wants to attend, even if you can get here by 6, you may want to go home, have dinner, say hi to your family. I just think 7 is a, a good time. People can settle a little bit after their work day and then get going. So, those are my thoughts. Counsel Swob.
Actually, I think, I mean, 6 for me would be, personally would be a lot better, but I also think that it's a lot better for some of the other people too. There, we do have Zoom. You can listen from home. It is a bit earlier. I do think we should have council meetings, subcommittee meetings on another day, other than the ones right before the meeting. I think that would help actually, give us a little bit more time to think about how we're going to report back then into the committee. So I like the idea of 6. Certainly, uh, four years on, six years on the school committee, we, we met at 6 and we didn't have, everyone was able to make it, not understand that it's not, I'm not talking just about teachers, I'm talking about other people that were on the committee that were able to make it from. So I think, I know that there could be an exception, but, um, I think, I think most people could probably make that time.
Compromise, 6:30.
President Muntzer. Yeah, just, um, again, I agree with Counsel Swob on the subcommittee meetings. I think it's just much more relevant to have them on another night. Um, I also think that to Vice President's comments, I think it almost potentially helps participation. I mean, you, you, you have a lot of people that just, you know, they want that family time. They want to be able to be home to put their kids to bed or whatever and, you know, if you're here till 8:30, 9 o'clock, whatever, uh, 10 o'clock, it's, it makes it difficult. I think you get more participation. Um, I think if people want to put, and this is not about our individual council, is this, I'm hoping is going forward, you know, for the next 30 years or whatever it is, but, you know, so it's not individually. I think, you know, no matter what you do, there's going to be times where it's just not going to work. And I mean, we've made exceptions depending on the meetings that we've had to adjust it to 7 or 6 or whatever that time happens to be, but, um, for most of the opportunity, for most of the times, I think a 6 o'clock meeting, and again, it's done on the school committee, it's done on the appeals board, it's done on other committees, um, is much more relevant in these day, in a, in this day and age.
Um, is this something, I know you had mentioned, uh, Town Manager Marino, that there was something we could use to poll people on the new website? Is this potentially something we can poll the res, because I, my main concern would be that people are able to attend and watch and listen in more. So if you want to do this, you, you make it work, right?[1503.11] If you want to do this, you make it work, right? But...
We can look into it. I haven't set it up yet, but certainly.
It'd just be interesting to see what people would prefer, because I think that was a really good point the President just made about family time, and everybody's life looks a little bit different, and it's kind of six of one and a half dozen of another.
Thanks, Professor Sefelt. We've had big meetings like we're going to have next week. We have them at six, and people come, a lot of people come. So, I think polling is a good idea, perhaps, but I don't think that many people, if they're going to come at seven, I think most of them will come at six, too. The people that are going to come are going to come, I think, one way or the other.
My last point is, you know, not only about the council, not only about the citizens, but I look at the people that are here all day, like our council clerk and our town clerk, our town manager, our DPW director. It just makes the date that much longer, and there's that downtime, too. So, you know, I think we should be looking at the totality of the people that it affects.
Polling?
Yes, Counselor Costigan.
Yeah, in my own opinion, with regards to the time change, I'm siding with Hannah on this with regards to the ability to get here. I know my wife works a couple of days a week and takes the train. The commute itself, the traffic, it's only getting later getting here every day. I pick her up at the T at quarter or six on most nights. I just think maybe it's just a little too much pressure to advance it forward six when we have working-class people who do take the T, let alone the T is slower than the car. And the traffic, I think the increased traffic is only going to delay people in getting back here to town. I mean, just look at Revere, we have 10,000 units coming up. So, I don't think it's a good time to change the time right now, and I would ask the question, has the time ever been changed since the charter has been approved?
Has the time ever been changed? No, we've been meeting at seven o'clock. It's twice a month. You know, it's two times a month. That, I think it's much more convenient for the citizens, for the employees, and to get more productive work done, is my own opinion. It has not been changed, that's been the time. It's been discussed, talked about a few other times, it's never been changed.
Any further discussion? Counselor Muntzen?
I'll probably abstain, because I'm somewhat indifferent, but I will tell you, just from personal experience, I was making dinner at six. And it would, it's either going to be missing family time in the, around dinnertime or missing dinner, missing family time at the end when everyone's kind of crashing and going to bed, but, so I'll probably abstain, but I do think it will add pressure, as Pat has said, to try to make it earlier. But, like I said, it's not that big of a deal for me.
Any further discussion from the council?
Is there a, would you consider 6:30?
I'd consider it five of seven at this point, so. I had the same thought. I mean, yes, I think 6:30 is a compromise. I think the reality is, is that, you know, then you get into, and it's just a, it's a habit, right? It's just changing habits. Everything, changing habits is hot. Yes, I think 6:30 is a good compromise, at least to start. And you know what? If it doesn't work, then you change it back. It's just a council rule, it's not a charter rule.
Yeah, I would, I would...
Amend the motion.
And we amend the motion to 6:30.
All right, do I hear an amendment?
Yeah, I would like to amend the motion to change it from six to 6:30.
Second.
All right, and a second to the amendment. Okay, so the motion is now to change the time of the council meetings to 6:30.
You're going to vote on the amendment first. So, you're going to vote on the amendment to change it to 6:30, right? Vote on it as amended.
So, vote on the amendment first to accept the amendment.
Vote on the motion as amended.
Just do it all.
Yeah, vote on the motion.
Okay, so we're going to vote on the motion as amended.
Sounds good.
A roll call vote, please.
Counselor Tesson-Hary?
No.
Counselor Costigan?
No.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor DiMarco? Counselor Aiello? Counselor Swol?
Yes.
Counselor DeRoz?
Yes.
Vice President Belcher?
No.
President Luttrell?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
6:30?
Okay, now.
Call the phone.
Got a while. All right. We've also, there was a motion, I moved the town council vote to amend council rules and procedures. Nope, we already made that one. There's a motion to suspend council rules for, and to ask for a special meeting next Tuesday at six o'clock to, for the purpose of one item only, and that's to pass the, or to discuss and vote on, the fiscal '25 budget. So, this is, motion's been made by Counselor... Second. Vice President Belcher, second by Counselor Munson. The reason for this is the charter, and this will be the last year that we'll have to do this. The charter says, and it's very specific, that you have, that the town council cannot receive the budget prior to 60 days before the fiscal year starts, and then it must vote on it within 45 days of receiving it, which means, basically, we officially get the budget May 1st, and we have to vote on it by June 15th, which is requiring this meeting. One of the items that was brought up, that we discussed and voted on, the town voted on and approved, is to change that. I asked for the language to be changed, so I think it's 180 days prior to the, that we receive it, and we have unlimited time. So, it's a far different process, and that will start next year. But this year, if we waited till our next scheduled, regularly scheduled meeting, it is the 18th, and that would not be in accordance with the charter, so we need to have a special meeting. So, the motion's on the table, it's been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those know, the ayes have it. All right, now, there's going to be several motions, which are all new business, and they're all going to be referred to finance, and they're all, most of them are regarding the budget. And, all right, so in accordance with the town charter, I move that town council vote to adopt the town manager's proposed annual general fund budget for fiscal year 2025, as set forward by the town manager's original submission date, May 7, 2024, and subsequently amended inclusive of personnel salaries and operating expenses set forth therein. And that to meet set appropriation, the town shall raise and appropriate, as well as appropriate from following other available funds, the sum of $61,425,014, or taking any other action. And these additional funds are $39,522 from cemetery lots, $5,000 from cemetery perpetual care, $75,000 from maintenance stabilization fund, $48,000 from regional 911, $573,038 from inter-fund transfers, and $220,000 from free cash earmark for the schools. That motion will be referred to finance. Motion pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 32, and in accordance with the charter of the town of Winthrop, I move the town council authorize the continuation of all revolving funds in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53, E1 op. That motion is referred to finance. In accordance with the charter of the town of Winthrop, I move that town council vote to adopt the town manager's proposed annual capital plan for fiscal year '25, as set forth in the town manager's submission date, May 7, 2024, and that to meet set appropriations, town shall raise and appropriate the appropriate form from available funds as detained therein or take any other action relative thereto. That will be referred to finance. Move that town council vote to appropriate the following sums for the operation and recreational fund for the recreational department, personnel and benefits cost $279,000 and change, operation and maintenance $140,000 and change, for the total of $382,073,38. Indirect costs $37,926,22. And as funding therefore, the town shall raise $420,000 as follows, user fees $390,000, subsidy from general fund $30,000, refer that to finance. Move that town council vote to appropriate the following sums for the operation of the Rink Enterprise Fund budget for fiscal year '25, personnel and benefit costs $204,000 and change, operation and maintenance $130,000 and change, for a total of $334,982,76. Indirect cost additional $31,817,24. The town vote to raise $366,800 as follows, user fees $336,800, subsidy from the town $30,000. That motion is referred to finance. Adoption of the Harvard Master Enterprise Fund budget for fiscal year '25, that the town council appropriate sums for the operations of the Harvard Master Enterprise Fund budget for fiscal year '25 as follows, benefits, personnel and benefits $162,000 and change, operation and maintenance $75,000 and change, a total of $238,289,40. Indirect cost totaling $69,620,60. And as funding therefore, the town votes to raise $307,910 as follows, and that's through user fees, and that will be sent to finance. Move the town council vote to appropriate the following sums for water and sewer enterprise fund, personnel and benefit cost $1,792,910,7. Operation and maintenance $9,66,237,46, for a total of $10,859,147,53. Indirect cost $379,024,47. Town will raise $11,238,172 through user fees, that is sent to finance. Move the town council vote to appropriate the following sums from solid waste enterprise fund, personnel benefit cost $131,000 and change, operation and maintenance $1,832,781. Total cost $1,963,891,50. Indirect cost $54,649. The town will raise $2,60,282 as follows, through user fees $1,218,540,50. Subsidy from general fund $600,000, retained earnings $200,000, that will be referred to finance. Move the town council appropriate, from retained earnings in water and sewer fund, the amount of $500,000 and transfer to water sewer capital stabilization fund or take any other action relative thereto, that will be referred to finance. Town council appropriate transfer $75,000 from Fund 520 Technology Fund to new capital project account entitled Town Hall Service for the replacement of the service that are housed at Town Hall and the purchase of backup service or take any other action relative thereto, that will be referred to finance. I move the town council vote to transfer $150,000 from below general fund appropriations to, to the below revolving funds and enterprise funds to assist in closing out fiscal year '24 or take any other action relative thereto, and they're taking $150,000 from pension appropriation to the Pauline Street revolving account, $50,000 tax title revolving, $10,000 Paxton Rex Enterprises, $30,000 solid waste enterprises, $60,000, that's going to be referred to finance. I guess you guys will be beaten on a different night than Tuesday. I move the town council vote to modify the following general fund budgets to facilitate the 30, June 30, 2024 closing for the fiscal '24 year, take any other action relative thereto, and this is just in accounting changes, where they're looking for $517,745 from a list of funding sources to a funding destination of $513,745. So, it's balanced out, that will be referred to finance. And the last one, I move the town council vote to authorize unpaid bills of a prior year to be paid from current year departmental budgets as noted below. Public relations for police, $249, and other public relations from the police subscription, $249. Fire and emergency vehicle inspections, $1,082,70. Winthrop Shore Drive portable toilet, $200. Pole pad supplies, $448,95. Toner and drum unit, $360,97, for a total of $2,590,52. That will be referred to finance. I believe that's all of them. Lucky you guys. Finance committee.
Finance committee, get ready.
Public comment.
Public comment. Did he say, did he say public comment?
I did.
Well, thank you.
No, you're not first now, because you...
So, last of your precincts, I want to apologize to the CDICR, I did not inform you folks that this is Portuguese Heritage Month, so, but all joking aside, thanks for kind of the appeal for folks to get involved, and I definitely will reach out, because, you know, I come from a long line of activists, and I always used to have to call my dad out, because he got so pissed off all the time at what our elected officials didn't do. And I reminded him that it's your job to kind of provide us with the opportunities to engage, but it's our job to engage. So, I'm not mad, CDICR for not raising the Portuguese flag, I'm mad at myself for not reaching out and getting engaged. So, thank you for that opportunity to remind, and I have another announcement. In East Boston, I'm really excited, we're going to be raising the flag here in Winthrop, funding in East Boston Friday night, 6 o'clock, Here's Park, we are raising the pride flag. I have two really exciting announcements in relation to that. One, we will have cake. And two, even more exciting, Counselor DeRoz has agreed to be our keynote speaker. This year's theme is the importance of representation in all walks of life of folks from that LPTQQ community, and there's nothing more brave than stepping out, being a role model, and being a trailblazer. You are that, sir, and we're so excited to have you this week. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Counselor DeRoz. Yes, Mr. Dow.
Thank you. I thought you were going to skip right behind me today, Jim.
Never. Jacked-out precincts.
Jacked-out precincts, one. The town used to burn the city, that's an option. I looked at the Corps of Engineers studies concerning seawalls. It was brief, believe me. But every city and town on the coast of, the world is looking for seawalls, so you have to eat your name on a list in order to stop thinking about it. And it's, Max, it's not our, it's not, it doesn't cost Winthrop anything. This wall should be reinforced to protect the utilities under that road. And the utilities serve 50-odd cities and towns in the Mass Water Resource District, so they get the best of us. We end up with the end of the stick, basically. So, let's have, let's get something going concerning reflation that seawall. You have to get on a list first, and the list could be to infinity, you know. Everybody, there's $100 billion seawalls, there's $5 billion seawalls, everybody wants a seawall. As far as the group act that you're undertaking here with the litigation, the mitigation with the Mass Water Resource, I'm glad you're making strides. I'll attend every meeting. One of the things I've mentioned is we should hire an expert. I was talking to a litigator that works at Massport, and he said, it'd be a good idea to get an expert to represent the town. So, I'd like to see that happen. I think it's a request for interest put out, and you don't know what you're going to get. You might get somebody that just did this last week, and got a lot more money. I think the Mass Water Resource owes the town a lot of money. Massport does, too, but I think the Mass Water Resource owes a lot of money. They've changed, Europe changed forever, and they should be held accountable. There's going to be big wave action down there, there's 27 hurricanes predicted, and the water's got no place to go now. So, let's get busy on that. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Diane, again, precincts two. I heard an odd question tonight about our comments suggesting that this is the third time that we've had state mandated zoning. Ooh, not the case. 40B was a preemption, not local implementation. 3A is the first time since whole rule was passed that they have ever mandated local zoning. Waters are a little different in harbors, because the federal government has a strong constitutional interest, they take into the barriers. All others have been optional, like 40R and 40S, and then the airport is also a different case, because that is a state-owned, that is state-owned land exempt from local zoning. There are agencies that may interpret or want to interpret 3A as a run-of-the-mill. They are actually named in 3A in the third paragraph. They include Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, Massachusetts Transportation Authority, Massachusetts Department of Transportation, and they are named in the statute. For everyone else, voting yes doesn't get you anything. Essentially, if you can't represent your constituents, you don't get to sit here anymore. You don't.
That's good.
First of all, there's a slim to no chance that anything we submit to the state is going to get approved. Only three have been approved so far, that excludes Brookline, the most braggart of them all, by the way, even though they're now building, you know, multi-bedroom rooming houses essentially, and they're in district, okay? They've not approved any more, they've approved three of them. All right? It's going to get overturned anyway, because, because.
Yep.
And also, if you, if you haven't floated it by the residents that you're thinking about putting this over, then sort of shame on you, because it's going to diminish their property value. There's also so many other things at play. There's 18 and growing towns and cities that have sued the state, okay? That's in federal court. There's, I think, three local challenges, and then there's a Milton case, which they've counterclaimed on a constitutional issue. Winthrop also has very, very special circumstances that weren't an exemption from 3A. Like, there is a bill right now that's sitting in committee that adds a fourth paragraph to 3A, which says that if you have complied with 40B, if you have got affordable housing, actual affordable housing in your community, then you get exempt from 3A. And we need to support that, we need to go tell Lydia Edwards, you support that bill, because that's the only thing that is even connected to affordable housing. I think it's sad, because there's people being told in this room, young people, that there's affordable housing in this bill, because there isn't. And essentially, yeah, that's all I have to say. We overwhelmingly reject 3A, and that's the end of the story. Don't represent us.
That's good. Thank you. Yes. No, it's okay, okay, you can go first. You can go.
No, of course.
Cassie, good house, precinct six. So, only three have been approved so far, because it is a phased process, right? We're in phase three, so the ones that were started early in this whole process are the ones that have been approved so far. There are some in process, and we're in the third phase and have a later deadline even to submit than some of the other communities. So, I do think that facts are important, and there's a lot of information out there, and that's why it's really important for us to have that consultant and have a process with the zoning committee.
Thank you. Kathleen.
Oh, hi, Kathleen, you're good, too.
I should actually introduce you now as Nick Ma.
I, yeah, thank you, thank you. That touched my heart more than I can say. And on that note, I will say during public comment, that he is going to Nationals next week.
All right.
And I would just want to...
Woo, good lift, though. Future Olympian. Come on, look at that.
I am, I am, I am excited.
It's amazing.
So, thank you. Sorry. Yeah, sorry, I'm a mom first, act of a second. I did have a question, and I know this isn't a question-and-answer period, but maybe at some point, someone, you know, get back to me. Regarding the MAPC, which is the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, I was wondering if the town actually has any actual contractual relationship with the MAPC, you know, regarding the town. I did a recent FOIA request regarding MBTA 3A, and noticed that one of our counselors is forwarding emails, not pursuant to a FOIA request, is forwarding emails to an employee who is a resident of Winthrop, to the, to her. She works for the MAPC, and I'm just wondering if there is a contractual relationship that the town has. Of course, as I FOIA'd information, anyone can FOIA information and get it. I'm a little concerned with a town counselor sending strategies to discuss with Secretary Augustus, and I have the proof of this, to an MAPC employee who, in my opinion, is a lobbyist for 3A. So, at some point, I'd like to know if there is a contractual relationship with the town and the MAPC, because I think it's very concerning when strategies to meet with Secretary Augustus are being sent to an MAPC employee, albeit to her personal email, but still being sent. So, I'd really like some information at some point on that, and we can laugh about that, sir, over there, but that's an issue. FOIA is a way to get information. A town counselor sending strategies on how to meet with Secretary Augustus and what to say to an employee of MAPC is a huge concern. say to an employee of MAPC is a huge concern. So, at some point, I'd like some clarification, if there is actually a contractual relationship with the MAPC in the town of Winthrop. Thank you.
I just, in terms of.
Just naming.
I was trying to remember what my number was. Precinct six? Karathanas? I'm trying to remember, I'm still dealing with the number, where I am. First of all, I knew there was a discussion of when meetings should happen. There's a person who's from Cambridge, Cambridge is city council, and it's city versus town, but their city council meetings start five thirty PM on a Monday, and I've seen, they start with public comment, I've seen their public comments go well past midnight. So, they can get people, if this whole thing, if people want to come, people come. That's very much true. I know it's really different than Winthrop, where it's less people and things like that, but I'll tell you, as a person who's first time coming here, my reaction of seven, it was like, seven o'clock? That's lovely. Like, I actually liked it, 'cause I was like, oh, that's later than I expected, it's not the five thirty rush. So, I know I'm not really solving anything by sort of feeding you, you know, arguments from both sides, hey, it's, you know, earlier, it can be better, because it'll get a lot more people, but also later is better, 'cause it could allow more people. So, I hope that, just two things to think, Cambridge, that might help. In terms of, you know, intergovernmental, you know, people sending each other emails, I don't know, maybe, I thought you could correct me on this or not, but if you're sending, any person can send anybody an email, the problem is if it becomes multiple town counselors or multiple individuals sending emails to each other, because then you have a quorum rule, if I'm correct.
No.
You can send anybody any email, it doesn't matter, but, because a constituent can be sent an email from a town's counselor, and a town counselor can send an email to an individual. The problem is when there's emails between town counselors about things, because then it becomes a business meeting, if it becomes more than the quorum of the town council. Yes. I might be wrong, but that's how it is in.
Silly Mallo's precinct one. Do we have a time and location for Arcade G's first meeting on the town?
I think it's June tenth.
June tenth. At the soonest time with the planning board, I'm not sure about the time, seven or six?
I thought it was six.
I think it's six, yeah.
I believe it's six, I'm not a hundred percent sure, we'll make sure.
Will they post an agenda as far as what they're gonna? Okay, thank you.
Bill Schrift, precinct five. So, just kind of comment about what Councilor DeMarco said, and Councilor Munson said, and trying to put town manager on the spot. I think I've had private conversations with you, a lot of you, several times, and a lot of the problems pre-existing, most of you have been on the council for less than five years. Tri Station's been a problem for twenty years, and Middle School Site's been vacant for eight years. The school probably should have had a couple overrides prior. Other than the problem is your apprentices that didn't deal with these problems when they should have. So, you guys are faced with all these problems all at once, in addition to the rising problem of climate, and now housing three A. And they're kind of all interrelated in different ways, because it's about budgets, it's about what the relationship is with the state. So, the good thing is that you were all willing to step up and face these issues. The bad, they were all left for you to solve. And so, you have to do this thoughtfully and figure out how they all interrelate. That's why you ran. You ran also not just to represent how people voted for you, but if you look at books such as Profiles in Courage, there are times when you actually have to make decisions that you believe are in the best interest of the town in the long run, even if a lot of the people and your supporters and friends and constituents are against it. That's what happens when you take public office. It's not just a situation where we would replace you with a computer, and everybody would vote their viewpoint, and that would be it. You folks are here to make intelligent decisions about what you think are in the interest. Whether that means that you, if you run again, would get reelected or not, quite frankly, that's not what your thought process has to be. You have to make tough decisions, that's why you step forward. I appreciate you doing that. Good luck.
Recall language, any update?
Recall language, we're expecting to hear back, we did contact the state, we're expecting to hear back. Very short.
And anything from Secretary Augustus?
No, well, as far as I know, no.
All right. Public relations. Town manager meeting Mural Beach, as we discussed earlier, discussion will be at PSA Hall at nine AM on Saturday, the eighth. June tenth and July seventh, sixteenth, the Winter Planning Board meeting with Arcade G, MBTA three A zoning. Six twenty-seven, June twenty-seventh, Winter Public Library celebrates its one-hundred-and-twenty-fifth anniversary from five to seven. And the Winter Market, the Winter Farmers Market dates June through October, Ingleside Park, nine AM to one PM, you can see that on the town manager's blog as well.
I think that is a good time to adjourn.
Is there anyone willing to make a motion to adjourn? Motion's been made and seconded, all those.